Moved by councillor Partridge, seconded by councillor Pursuta. All those in favour, carry. Onto item 4.1, I would like to call Matt Jellie to the podium to provide the presentation for item 4.1.
I was a little unsure of the order of things today, so I thought maybe the presentation from the consultants was up first, but I'm good to go now. So, I'd like to thank the General Issues Committee for agreeing to let me speak today. Ward boundary review is an issue I've followed for many years now, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be brief, but to start out, I think it's worth giving some basic context on ward boundaries in the city of Hamilton, both in terms of how long it's been since we've undertaken a serious review of the ward boundaries, as well as how many times this council has discussed the issue over the years. Our current ward boundaries, of course, date back to the amalgamation of 2001, policy of the then premier Mike Harris and the progressive conservative party to merge two-tier municipalities and regions into single-tier municipalities. Fifteen years later, the effects of this policy are still felt on our daily politics and our relation to each other as a collection of many distinct communities, spread across approximately 1,100 square kilometres, from Sheffield to 50 Point and from Mount Hope to the North End. Two of those points are in Brenda's ward, as it turns out, with the size and shape of that ward being quite unique. You're welcome. I didn't mean it as a compliment. And all these communities were forcibly amalgamated by the provincial government of the time. And roughly half of our amalgamated city's population are younger than 34, which means they weren't a voting age when decisions were made regarding amalgamation. So 95 and 99, I'm 34 currently, I wasn't able to vote in those elections, so it's one of the reasons I think it's time, and well overdue, time to deal with the issue. And the boundaries that we have in the old city of Hamilton actually haven't changed since 1985, when I was three years old. Very specifically, population parity between wards wasn't made a priority at the time of amalgamation. Originally, the idea was to create a system of 13 wards. Mike Harris's cabinet made decisions to add two seats, one to Stony Creek and one to And the idea of preserving communities of interest and respecting former town boundaries was considered to be more important. The Amalgamation Transition Board advised that the new council deal with the issues of ward boundaries thereafter, but we've kept the same system ever since. As the consultant report that you'll be receiving today confirms, two wards are much higher than in population than the average ward, and three wards fall below, well below, the population of the average ward. Some residents have up to three and a half times the representation per resident as some other wards, in the most extreme cases being Ward 7 on Hamilton Mountain, on the high end, and Ward 14 in Flambro on the low end. The Ontario Municipal Board advises that municipalities should do reviews of ward boundaries every 10 years in order to adjust to changes in population, to ensure all citizens are receiving reasonably adequate and equitable representation. They also advise that no ward is 25% more or less than the population of the average ward. Over the past 15 years, the issue of redrawing ward boundaries has come before council a total of four times, including what we're discussing today. The first three times, the issue was deferred to the next term, and the next term, and the next term of council, repeatedly punted forward, due to the potentially contentious nature of the debate that could follow. But the issue will always be contentious, it's not a reason to run away from dealing with it. The reason we're here today, the fourth time council has dealt with the issue, is a result of a citizen-led petition that was delivered to council in 2012. The OMB's rules state that any time 500 electors within a municipality can petition the municipality to redraw ward boundaries. It was actually a petition of 680 citizens that signed that petition, but there were discrepancies between the petition and the electors' list, I won't get into all the technicalities of that. But enough names were disqualified from that petition, and it wasn't made binding, but as an act of good faith, council pledged last term to undertake a review during this term of council. So, here we are again. The majority of councillors during this term voted to undertake the review. The consultants spent a year studying the issue, consulting with residents, and I hope you'll agree that they've delivered a comprehensive report with two options for council to consider, both of which are improvements over the status quo. Personally, the 15-seat option provides the best equality and parity between wards, and this should be a starting point for discussions on the issue, not an end. And my opinion, backed by that consultant's report, hasn't changed. All wards should be equal, all wards should be, have a reasonably equal number of residents in each, and each councillor around the horseshoe should represent roughly the same number of residents. That principle is simple. The job of carrying out that principle is complicated, but this council paid consultants to do that work, and that work is before you today. I urge you to act on it, rather than delay this decision to yet another term of council, which would require another review. I've heard suggestions from the mayor and others that we shouldn't deal with this issue during this term, suggesting that it should be punted to the next term or a citizens' panel. And with all due respect to the mayor and others who've made that suggestion, I just, I find that unacceptable, considering the history of this file. Citizens have spent time engaging on the issue.
Mr. Jellie, sir, you've exceeded the five-minute point, would we?
I'm just about to wrap up.
You're just about done, that's fine. If we can continue, thank you.
Again, we've heard that suggestion that it would be pushed off to the next term of council, but citizens, the 680 that signed the petition, over close to 200 who engaged in the consultations with the consultants over the past year, the issue's been outstanding for at least 15 years, and punting it forward kind of shows bad faith towards those citizens who've spent their time engaging on the issue, and taxpayers who paid for the review. And I've heard some councillors suggest that there's not allowed clamour among voters for this issue, maybe it shouldn't be dealt with, but let's be honest, there are many obscure functions of city government, especially governance issues, that don't happen as a result of public clamour, but they're the right, fair, and sensible thing to do. I do notice there's no major public clamour for keeping ward boundaries as they are. The major public debates we have in council chambers are over things like highways, and stadium, and casino, and public transit, which are all tangible items that everyone can understand. The inner workings of municipal government isn't top of mind for most people, admittedly, but it doesn't mean it's not important. Every single term of council deals with large projects, and that doesn't mean we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. I urge the community to act in good faith and the public process on this issue, and to finally deal with the longstanding democratic inequity between municipal wards. This is an issue about equality and democracy. As obscure as the issue might seem, I feel it's one of council's most important responsibilities to ensure that this council is a good representation of the citizens it represents. I ask you to work with the recommendations of these consultants, instead of leaving it up to citizens to appeal this issue to the Ontario Municipal Board, who could impose boundaries on council without your consent. Citizens have acted in good faith on this issue, and now so should council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jellie. Are there any questions of the presenter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to receive moved by councillor Collins, seconded by councillor Marula. All those in favour, carry. Is Georgina Beadie here? Georgina Beadie is here. Please come to the podium to provide your presentation for item 4.2.
Good morning. For those of you who may not know me, I'm a resident of Ward 11, and I'm a former councillor for the city of Stony Creek. Some of what I'm about to say obviously contradicts what the former speaker pointed out, but nevertheless, it's a democracy. You have a great many items on your council plate these days, as anyone who pays attention to the news can say. With this in mind, I in fact am asking you to wait for ward realignment until the current 2016 census is complete, so as to begin with accurate numbers. According to the Canada Census website, census.gc.cn, the 2016 census collection response is 98.4%, and it's higher than in 2011, and it's higher than in 2006. Population and dwelling counts will be published on the Statistics Canada website on February 8, 2017. There does not seem to be any proof in the reports that I have read with regard to this review that would back the 2026 review projections in this review. There's no defensible decision that they are accurate, and therefore, I don't think they can be defended. In fact, I would say that the numbers in these reports are five years old. Please wait and use the correctly attained 2016 census numbers. These, this, sorry, this report that you have in front of you will still be current if you wait until those numbers are available, and therefore, you will be able to use that, this report, as a basis, and just adjust the numbers, in my opinion. However, if you must, I suggest a short-term solution, and that may be to reorganise the mountain wards 6, 7, and 8 only, in order to balance the numbers. Part of this reorganisation could include a residential portion of Ward 11. This being said, it has been shown in a federal court case that the guiding principle that is noted in the report, effective representation, does not always result when wards are divided according to representation by population. Effective representation is key in a democracy. Larger numbers of residents do not necessarily mean a heavier workload, whereas diversification in a ward may in fact be an element. Yet there are a lot of different types of issues, for example, dumps, and airports, conservation authorities, and that sort of thing, there may be more diversification Whichever way council votes, please look at the guiding principle, community of diversification of interests. Please keep the rural and/or Green Belt Plan areas together, i.e. Glanbrook, rural area of Ward 11, and the Green Belt area in Winona. In the round two PowerPoint presentation, in the chart Evaluation of Present System, I did not find the definition of the term range to be clear, nor the definition of effective representation. In this same chart regarding the community or diversity of interests, there is no clear indication that this 2016 review will change this. And what exactly does this comment mean? How will any of the ward options listed change this? The summary of options displayed on maps in the chart for the 2015 Population Round Two shows that there are not that many actual problems, especially when compared to the unproven 2026 projections. Therefore, I ask that council wait for more accurate information, and then review the redistribution. Finally, my two largest concerns about this process. A, the process used for this review, and, sorry, number one is the process used for this review, and number two, there's no indication of discussion of electoral reform, which is potentially, in my opinion, very, very important, and in my opinion, potentially more important than this review, especially when only 34% of eligible voters voted in 2014. Some points with regard to each of these points. A, the advertising of the process for the ward review was poor at best. I believe this led to few residents being or feeling engaged in this process. The message was inconsistent and very unclear. For example, the first round advertised using the term "open house". I looked into whether it was going to be an open house and was told, yes, it would. Turned out, if you, with an open house, all of us know that you are able to drop in at any time. Turned out, they broke off into little groups, and if you didn't come at the beginning, you came into the middle of something that already began.
Excuse me, Ms. Beadie, again, you've exceeded your five minutes. Move to the link. All right, we can continue. Thank you.
In round two, there was a presentation, but it was never advertised as to what time that presentation was going to take place. So, it might have happened at 6:30, or if you showed up at a quarter to nine, you missed it. Now, that's not to say that I didn't eventually get it down and get it there and hear it. Residents did not know what time to show up. There's still so much more that I could say about that part of the process. Why was choosing the guiding principles not part of what the residents were asked for? The list as presented during the public sessions made it clear that the choices by council weighted the list, placing participation by population at the top. Many of you have commented on the small number of residents who participated. It's my understanding that the process, and it was already clarified by the previous speaker, resulted from a petition, and now I hear that it may or not have been somewhere between 500 and 700. The number of residents who participated was reported to be approximately 90. What became of the other 510, 610, and where are they today? Apparently, this is an issue for the residents. I think it's a valuable issue. I'm cautioning you and asking that you slow down and use accurate figures. Even though I requested sign-in sheets at the Warplane Heritage Meeting during round one, there were no sign-in sheets until well into round two. How could we actually accurately, other than someone sort of keeping track on their Was there a sincere need for the review at this time? In order to be accurate, please take the time needed now, in order to do the best job. The final report makes continual reference to input from the public. Are they here? Where's that other 500 people? People are driving this decision? What a scary, those 90 people that actually supposedly showed up are driving this decision? That's a scary thought. With regard to the electoral, sorry, the electoral process in the city of Hamilton, it has many, many flaws, and it really sincerely needs to be looked at. It's serious, and I'd be happy to sit down with anybody who wants to have a conversation about that, I see that your manager is in the room today. Although not specifically part of the board review, it could have been part of the discussion, in my opinion. For example, it could have been a guiding principle. Correction of this part of our democracy is far more important at this time, in my opinion. I trust that my comments will be useful in the discussions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beadie, and we do have one speaker on the list, councillor Brenda Johnson, and are there any others more like?
Yeah, thank you very much for coming. One of the questions, or one of the comments that you made was about the public information and the process. How many did you go to?
Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that. Thank you. And the 90, did that include me three times, and my husband six times?
You went three times, your husband went six times. So, the three times that you went, were you seeing the usual suspects when you were there, or did you see a group of different people each time?
That's kind of difficult to answer. The first one, there were, well, it started with five of us, ended up with eight of us. And a few of them I know are involved in the community and our interests. The second time, I was way at the end of the process, and so there wasn't anyone in the room. And then, as often happens when you go to Bimber, there's lots of interest, and that was the best attended, and well-done, and well-presented, and that's the one where there was actually a sign-in sheet.
Thank you, and just to clarify, when I said usual suspects, I meant the same people at the same, because that's my terminology.
My direct question, answer to that is, I did not see the same people.
No, that's great, and thank you very much for the diversity comments, I think that that was well said. When you have a ward that is heavily with the social services component, and a lot of people with the different needs, than the people out in rural area who have something that's completely on the opposite end of the spectrum, and it's, you know, dig my ditches and that sort of thing too, and the airport landfills, so, yeah, no, I really appreciate that. So, what you're saying is, the census was done in 2016, but we've yet to get those numbers, and it is your understanding that 94% was the return?
According to the website, 98%.
98, sorry, I misunderstood. So, 98%, so it is your belief to wait until the 2016 census come out, to really get a better picture of what's happening today, rather than what happened five years ago, these are the numbers that we're using today?
And with the greatest of respect, I don't think having to wait six months is unreasonable.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm a bit confused by the numbers, because I know that on the first round, at the multi-use facility Ward 8, it was over 150, 160 people there. It was one of the largest-attended ones, and I can tell you overwhelmingly, that people didn't feel that we need to be going forward at this time as well. I don't see that represented here in the documentation, but it was clear what, where people.
That's information that I didn't have, and I'm happy to hear that there were that many.
So, I, you mentioned something that's really interesting to me, and I absolutely agree with you, community of interest. And that's actually a key, key component, ensuring that we have fair representation, understanding all the different value sets and challenges within certain geographic areas, that is also a part that needs to be considered. In this, one of the options presented, they have the link as a dividing line. So, I have Rosedale, sorry, not Rosedale, I have Rollston with Westmount, there's a Catholic school there, and there's two public schools there. But all the kids that attend those schools are from the other side of the link. And so, I've heard from parents, this might not be a situation now that I'd have to deal with two different councils on some overlapping issues. This is really a community of interest, when you divide the community where my kids are attending school outside, in a different boundary, at such a large number. Now, I know that it can't be perfect when you divide these things, but we're talking in this situation, probably a third of my population is, several of these neighbourhoods are attending schools on the opposite side of the link. Do you think that, that represents community of interest when you divide that?
It's obvious to me, from what you've just said, that the community is in a different shape than what is being proposed.
I appreciate that. I'd also agree with you on the, on the, had the best numbers in regards to the census numbers. In Ottawa, there was an Ontario municipal appeal, and back to that, when you look at effective representation, it's not just about that 25% rule, there are exceptions to the rule. In fact, in Ottawa, where I recall, there was a rural area that had, because you're not going to have the same densities.
Right.
You will not have the same density as a rural area, but they are entitled to have a voice, and that would have, and it won't be ruled, they're entitled to have the voice, even with a lesser population.
Absolutely, I couldn't. You're talking to me, Terry. Absolutely. I couldn't agree more.
I just want to put that as record, I want to see how you felt about that, because when people feel that it's just about numbers, it's about people. Thank you.
I'd just like to bring you back to, where are all those people that signed the petition?
Where are your supporters?
Excuse me, no comments from the gallery. No, there are no comments from the gallery. You've had your time to speak, thank you. Are there any further comments, councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, and Georgina, always good to see you in our chambers, welcome back. You've raised two, two points that resonated well with me, and certainly, one of them was the diversity issue, being 70% of a rural ward, and 30, approximately 30% is urban. You know, we certainly have the green belt issues to deal with, we have Niagara Skarnan issues to deal with, we have the Clean Water Act issues to deal with, and it requires an enormous amount of staff time, as well as my, my office time. And the second one is, is that resonated with me, was the census information. That was a concern that was raised at the, one of the public meetings held at Harry Howell Arena. I had about 20 residents show up for that, I think, 2025, and I know councillor Pursuta had 40 or a few more at Rockton. And one of the things that my residents were concerned about was, with all the enormous growths going on in Water Down, we have 8,000 new homes being built, we have, you know, that equates to about 17,000 new residents coming in, and we've got about a quarter of that build going on. And so, they, you know, their concern was, if, if the numbers are not based on, on current numbers, then it's not really an accurate way of calculating, and certainly, the guiding principles in that case are not being met, which you've referenced. So, I just, my comments are just that I do appreciate you raising both of those, because, you know, certainly, they were both raised by, by my residents at, at the community meeting. So, thank you very much.
I would encourage councillors to check the census.gc.on, and that information that I've quoted is there.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, councillor Jackson, can I ask you to take the chair, please?
Councillor Scully.
I do have a couple of questions and comments. This week, we've heard from, we will have heard our second, but earlier this week, we heard from one consultant who represented or presented information about growth based on numbers, and identified the inner city as, as the area where we will see the greatest growth in population. Later today, we will hear another consultant come forward and identify the outlying areas, mountain areas, councillor Johnson, Conley, Pearson, councillor Partridge's areas, as the area where we will see the greatest growth. And I, I guess what I'm getting at is, I agree with you, we need to have some real numbers to work with, because we're having two very conflicting presentations within just a matter of days, in terms of where the city is actually growing, and making some very fundamental decisions based on projections.
Driving here today, one can see that there is obviously growth or changes happening with regard to the gas station. So, I absolutely agree with your point about the numbers. I also accept that there has to be a cutoff date. I mean, it has to be, you know, if you say, for example, when this comes out, February 8, I believe it's going to be posted on the website, so if you say that's the drop-down date, then you've set a bar. But this information in these reports is five years old. It's, you already know, you've just pointed out to all the things that could have changed, or will have changed, and you've heard already the projections of different groups, so I'm asking you, as a councillor, to use more accurate figures. Yes, they will never be perfect, I get that, but at least they'll be current. And I do honestly believe, I know that there will probably be some who will say, oh, but the money we spent on the study, the study would not disappear, it would just be added to, in my opinion, and so the projections. It could change all those charts, you know, the ones that say that in 2026, there's going to be, I'm not, I don't want to pick on any particular ward, but some of the more rural wards are only going to have, they're not going to meet the criteria, the little check marks and all that sort of thing. Because of my other hat, I'm very aware of what's going on in Water Down, because of the Skarnan crossings, and where they, how do we factor those in if their data is five years old? So, I couldn't agree with you more, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Through the chair, and case in point, I was driving through councillor Conley's ward the other day, and somebody was directing traffic in the middle of Rommel Road, and I realised they were directing people to go and apply for, to look at a new subdivision, Central Park, and they were getting wristbands to line up, because there were so many people looking to buy in that property, and it was, actually, I was shocked at the number of people who were interested in that one development property.
With the greatest of respect, I think Summit Park is in Ward 11.
Central Park?
Summit Park.
I'm talking about Central Park.
Oh, Central Park.
Central Park.
Okay, sorry.
I'm talking about Central Park, it's a new subdivision off of Rommel.
Sorry.
And, and, and another, through the chair, if I may, one other issue I wanted to bring up, and that's the uniqueness of, of the wards, and I will go back to councillor Pursuta's ward. The agricultural sector in this city is often overlooked, and yet, it is the, I believe, the number-two contributor in our economy, and to rob, I think... And to rob, I think, that sector of real representation, I think, is a disservice. And it's just a point, and perhaps maybe again, you could speak to that.
I think you summed it up very well. That's one of my huge concerns. I really, if it came down to it, am opposed to looking at the ward review in terms of representation by population. I really believe that there are more important elements. And there's a chart. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, and I don't know what page it was. It's a circular one that shows the responses at the open houses, I believe, in round two in terms of representation by population, community of diversity, and a third one. And they're all within a certain percentage. And it's not very big, maybe 5%? And apparently, there are more than 90. I'm not sure which document I got that out of. Apparently, the response is much more than 90. But of the people that live in the city of Hamilton and then the people who actually showed up, it's still a solid number. So I'm not suggesting that you would necessarily go back to the public. I'm suggesting that you get accurate figures and then move forward. And I really support what you're saying about the rural.
Thank you, Georgina. Counselor?
Thank you, Counselor. Those are my questions. May I take the chair?
Cheers back to you. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Thank you. Received by Councilor Brenda Johnson, seconded by Councilor Whitehead. All those in favor? Carrie, I would now like to call Stuart Beatty to the podium to provide the presentation for item 4.3. And Counsel, before we begin this delegation, are we waiving the rolls over the time limit? Thank you.
I can do this in five minutes. She knows me. Members of council, thank you for this opportunity. And thank you for initiating the consultants' review. I attended a few of the meetings. They were small meetings, but we had good discussions. I had good discussions with the consultants as well. My family moved here in 1954. I fell in love, got married, and moved to Winona. And my lovely wife is with me today, and I disagree with her totally. You should have been in my kitchen in the last week. She's very, very argumentative. She knows your mind. She knows your mind. But, yes, I love her dearly. But I sat there and went on. I've seen a lot of change. Regional government, amalgamation, changes in writings. And I've been involved in a few elections federally, provincially, municipally, school board. I think I've been involved in just about everything in my neighborhood. So when I saw this come up, I said, I should have a look at this. And quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, the system is broken. You can argue about numbers. Numbers come in, numbers gone. The present system is not adequate for the city of Hamilton. I came to the view, as I went to these meetings and talked to people, that the system you have in place today, we have in place, not just you, was created for amalgamation. It is a Hamilton-Wentworth ward system. It's not a city of Hamilton ward system. Now, I don't suggest that you take Plan One or Plan Two from the consultants. But I do suggest that you need to make some changes. You have to make some changes. And you've got the data to do it. You've got the numbers to do it. The mountain councilors, there's got to be a change there. And yes, I prefer the first one being representation by population, the second being effective government, the third one. I went through all of the principles, and they applied all the principles. The federal government applies the same principles. Some of them are waived, some of them not. Communities, I don't think the communities are going to suffer. I don't think Winona is going to disappear. I don't think Water Down is going to disappear. It's not going to happen. The ward system that you bring about... And sit down this afternoon, hash it out. But you have to make a change, or the OMB will make you make a change. I prefer that you make the change. I prefer the change be made by Hamilton, by Hamilton Council. You have the authority, you have the power, and you have the responsibility. Please use it. Give us a ward system that is for the city of Hamilton, please. The second part I'd make a plea on is election reform. On election day, and I've been in a few of them, and my wife alluded, one thing that we do disagree with, or one thing that we do agree with is the percentage turnout has got the increase. We've got to give it up. Somehow, we have to get it up. And the challenge should be, and the mission should be, to get it up to 50%, at least. 51 would be nice. I don't know how you do it, but we need to look at it. We need to look at the polling. If you bring in a new ward system, you're going to look at a new polling divisions. The new polling divisions will be aligned with new polling places because you have to be able to get into the polling place, vote, and get out. And that, I've seen that jam up so many times. The machines, if they're working, it's great. If they fail, look at it. Online, weighted ballot, all those things have to be looked at to try to increase the turnout. Because democracy suffers if the mix time is 30%. I asked you to consider that. So I ask you, one, give us a ward system for the city of Hamilton. We're not Hamilton-Wentworth anymore. Amalgamation's gone. The city of Hamilton needs a ward system that it can operate fairly and justly and not out of balance, I think. Did I do that in five?
4:23. Just, sir, we have questions. Councilor Brenda Johnson is first.
Yep, thank you.
Of course.
Of course.
I already...
I could attest to the fact they don't agree on a lot of things. One of the things that was said before by your lovely wife was to wait six months until the real census come out, to really understand where the population... Because your first comment was, I believe in representation by population. Do you agree that we should wait until the 2016 census come out so we can have more current numbers rather than five-year-old numbers?
No.
Fine. Do you want to expand on that?
You want me to elaborate?
Sure.
And the report by the consultants, they've given you right up to 2026. They've done a really good job of projecting. I would think, based on the past data, that data is going to be supported. And if you wait six months, why not wait another four years? We really have to date that.
Okay.
You keep kicking it down the street, you'll never do anything.
Usually, when we're at the kitchen table, I can tell on something right now, but we'll just make this polite through the chair. You attended six meetings, I heard.
Yes.
And the comment I made before, and I used the terminology wrong. When you were at all six of those meetings, did you see a variety of different people at each one? Or did you see people that seemed to be consistently coming out the same as what you did?
They were different people. When I went to... Well, the only time I really saw similar people would be Warplane Heritage on the first round and Agriculture Hall on the second round, and I know people in Clambroke. The second time around, there was far more people.
Okay. No, that's good to know. Thank you. Because I was just wondering whether or not it was the same people coming out, which would not be a good thing.
The one I went to on Westmount, I think it was in your area, I think that was the heaviest-attended meeting for the consultants' reports. But they were good meetings. It was a lot of good discussion. I'm sad that people haven't showed up. I'm sad that people haven't showed up. This is a very important issue, in my book. There's nothing more important than the democratic process.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments about the election reform. I totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Whitehead?
Thank you, and thank you for coming forward. And I always love your forceful way and passion towards democracy. And you've been contributing for many, many years, and I know and I'm aware of it. Thank you for your contributions. So we still have what I call amalgamation hangover. And you indicated that we're one city now. But the problem is that our tax policy doesn't reflect that. So when you're looking at a council representing a ward, it's very difficult to have a ward that has two different tax policies because you can find yourself in a real conflict trying to defend one over the other. So the question I have is, would it not make sense until we resolve that tax policy? We could really optimize what you envision in regards to a true Hamilton ward boundary. But before you can do that, you have to resolve the tax policy.
I'd have to say no again because I'm not really knowledgeable on where the tax lines are and how it affects and how many wards it affects. Obviously, I would say it affects yours. It doesn't affect yours.
Yes, a different clarification. All the suburbs have an area rating on transit, for example.
Yes.
So currently, there's a different formula to calculate what they pay towards our taxes.
Yes.
The older urban areas where transit, they pay the full pop.
Yes.
So the barrier right now is that you can... If you really... But I believe that... But I agree with you truly that we get rid of that barrier, that we can... There could be good portions of bank cash that makes sense to fold into Ward Eight. And you can move that around quite nicely because you won't have two different communities of interest in regards to the tax issues because that's what one of the barriers are. So right now, all of the suburban communities have a different tax rate on transit, for example. So as a counselor, trying to fold in a suburban area to an older city boundary, that council will be stuck representing two different tax issues. And certainly, right now, I can tell you that there are a number of people in the old city that believe that there shouldn't be any area parity rating on transit. Everyone should be paying the same for it. Certainly, the suburbs, which is another community of interest, they may have a different perspective, which really would put a counselor with those two different interests within the same ward boundary in a conflicted position.
I don't know if that exists now, and I don't know that conflict. I don't know if it exists now. I don't know if it's going to exist under the models. I was focused on one set of reform, not another set of reform. I can say honestly, I don't really want to pay you any more taxes, one way or the other. And I think I speak for all the taxpayers in Hamilton. We don't want to pay any more tax.
But I think I want the same vision as you. I don't want to... The purpose wasn't to get into the tax debate.
Okay.
The issue was to truly realize your vision of one city and having wards better represent that. There is a barrier, and that barrier is you will have two different tax policies that affect the suburbs and the cities. So it's very difficult to do exactly what you like to do, and that is now recognize the city, create the boundaries as such. Because until we deal with that tax policy, you are now putting those counselors in those theoretical wards in a position of conflict.
Well, you're going to make the decision of the ward boundaries. I'm assuming you're going to take that into account. I don't know. I only know what the consultants have recommended, and I really don't have a problem with what they've recommended. I'm sure that because of local issues, you're going to adjust that. But hopefully, today, you're going to come up with a ward system for the city of Hamilton, and I suggest you do that. And after you have that, then I discuss the tax code.
Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Stuart, you and I have known each other for a long...
A long time for me.
Stuart and I saw it together as trustees for a few years on the Wentworth County Board of Education. And I've always known you to be lovely. Of course, I think I've always been the same way.
Yes, sir.
We had a lot in common during those years. And, you know, I don't have a field for Winona other than what Councilor Johnson tells us. But Ancaster still has some deep wounds in our amalgamation, and they didn't like it. And one thing I'm always able to tell them is that they have a safety net. And the safety net is there's seven suburban representatives and the whole city representatives, which was done, I believe, deliberately by the federal government. That's why they added Winmore, Clambroke, and Winmore, Stoney Creek. We had that eight-seven balance, so the bear went with the suburbs. You have something that was very controversial and very detrimental to the suburbs, you tied over and failed. And, you know, it's my intent to protect that until the cows go home because that's what my constituents want me to do. How do you feel about that, maintaining that, you know, whether it's taxation issues or capital budget issues or a whole smooth? Suburbs are united in saying that we're being... They're not comfortable with something. They have that safety net. Comments?
Well, how long do you want to keep the safety net? Because you've had it for 16 years. In 16 years, you have done nothing with respect to ward boundary improvements or ward boundary revisions. We are now one city. I respect Ancaster. I respect Stoney Creek, but...
So your answer is, do you think that we should let that safety net go?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to radically disagree about that.
Absolutely. We have disagreed on a lot of things over the years.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? All right, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Jackson, would you please take...
Get him out of here, is that it?
Stu, hang on.
I have one question if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it. I would never have the courage to stand up in a public place and say you disagree with your wife because I would be concerned about the consequences.
My wife and I have a marvelous marriage, and she disagrees with me, too. No. We have some good conversations.
Counselor Skelly, I think we've heard enough about the Beatty's personal fantasy. It's your turn, Counselor Skelly.
Okay, Tom.
I do have a question, and that is, if we go ahead, you said we should act on this, these recommendations, one way or the other, and move forward immediately, there's a cost to doing that. If we come back with six months and find the new data that is provided through the census completely alters the population, would you feel that that was money well spent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thanks, Stu. Back to you, Counselor Skelly.
Thank you. I need a motion to receive the report moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor?
Very good. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. I would now like to call upon Eric Carvenin. I hope I pronounced that right. Is that correct? Thank you. Senior Project Coordinator Watson &amp; Associates Economists Limited, Dr. Robert Williams, ICA Associates and Trust Learning, to provide the presentation for item 5.1. And just for counsel, if Rose and Tony Fallis are in attendance, answer any questions as well. And gentlemen, if you could introduce yourselves, and Gary is here as well. Maybe you could introduce yourself and your position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members of council. I'm Eric Carvenin, Senior Project Coordinator with Watson &amp; Associates. And I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Robert Williams and Mr. Gary Scanlon. So we're here today to provide you with our findings and recommendations from our Hamilton Ward Boundary Review Study. Sorry about that. So as you may be aware, the city of Hamilton retained our consulting team, an independent consulting team led by ourselves, Watson &amp; Associates, in association with Dr. Robert Williams, Trust Learning Solutions, and ICA Associates to undertake a comprehensive ward boundary review for the city of Hamilton. This study began back in October of last year. The ward boundary review represents the first opportunity that the municipal representation needs of all residents of the amalgamated city are being considered collectively. So we consider this a made-in-Hamilton review, an amalgamated city of Hamilton review. Our study has a number of objectives. That is, it's premised on the legitimate democratic expectation that municipal representation in Hamilton will be effective, equitable, i.e. that it will be fair, and an accurate reflection of the contemporary distribution of communities and people across this city. Our study was framed around six guiding principles that were adopted by city council back in the... early 2015, through the clerk's report referenced in the slide. These six principles are: representation by population, population and electoral trends, means of communication and accessibility, geographical and topographical features, community or diversity of interests, and finally, effective representation. As I had mentioned, this study is about, began more than a year ago, in October of 2015, and has had a number of very important phases of work completed to date. Phase one included a background data research and review, a development of a public engagement strategy, and also the gathering of information on the present ward system in place in the city. In phase two, we held a public information and engagement sessions concentrating on the existing ward boundary structure and the guiding principles that were adopted for this study. This was called round one of consultation. In phase three, we prepared an interim report that provided a series of preliminary ward boundary options, and these were taken to the public through a series of consultations that we called round two, a public consultation. We're now in phase four. We prepared a final report where we present our final options to you, which is the point of discussion here today, and we look forward to discussing this in further detail with So as I had mentioned, we had two rounds of public consultation in this study. The purpose of the public engagement component was twofold: to engage the people of Hamilton in a manner that provides valuable input to the study process, and secondly, to ensure that council, that the ward boundary alternatives reflect municipal vision, principles of the public engagement charter, and community input. Through our rounds of consultation, participants were invited to provide their input and opinions with regard to the key strengths and weaknesses of the current ward system, the prioritization of the guiding principles that were adopted for the study, and to provide feedback on the preliminary alternative ward models that were presented in round two of consultation. I must stress that the feedback and comments received from the public consultation are reflected in the analysis presented here and have helped inform the findings and recommendations. Hamilton is a changing city. Since the time of amalgamation back in 2001, you were a city of about 500,000 people, and since that time, the city's population has increased by about 9%. We did a very thorough, comprehensive, and rigorous growth analysis to understand baseline population conditions in the city and growth trends to 2026, and we feel confident in the analysis that's presented in our reports. And so the question is, do the current ward boundaries reflect the changing nature of the city and how it's evolved over the past 15 years? Over the next decade, the population is expected to increase by about 12% to about 68,000 people, growing to about 633,000 by our estimates by 2026. And over that period, a large part of that growth is going to be concentrated in present wards 11, 9, and 15. And so the question is that do the ward boundaries as they currently exist continue to reflect the changing nature of the city as we move forward over the next decade? We have spent a fair amount of time through this study discussing population balance or parity by ward, and this is reflected in two of the guiding principles that were adopted for this study, and certainly through the public consultation process, we heard very clearly the population balance or parity by ward is very important. Currently, the average population per ward in an ideal system would be about 37, 38,000 people per ward, and in the future year in 2026, around 42,000. Now, we also recognize that some variance or flexibility in that population per ward is needed to account for local circumstances and geographical differences between the wards, and so we have adopted a principle of plus or minus 25% rule in terms of a reasonable variance within population from the median. As you can see from the chart on the slide above, there are a number of wards that are within that variance of population, plus or minus 25%, that we are trying to strive for in the existing system, and most of those wards are within the old city. However, there are, there are a number of wards that are either well above or well below the desired population, and this includes wards 7 and 8, and in future year, Ward 11. There's also a number of wards that are below the desired range in population, and that includes wards 10, 13, and 14. And so the question is, is that is this acceptable moving forward? And now turn it over to Dr. Williams for the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Eric. The chart, or the slide here is picking up on the same themes, that what we're looking at is that the population trends within the city, if we're working from amalgamation forward, we've now seen a change in the distribution of population across the city. And it's interesting that this shows that much of the shift has been toward the so-called suburban communities, that that is where growth is happening. So that's one important reality. Second one is, I guess, if you will, the flip side of that, that Hamilton has always had, at least since amalgamation, had an urban and rural population component, but as we move forward, the urban proportion, and that's not just in the old city, but urbanized neighborhoods have become larger. We've also, we were also struck by the fact that this population growth is not taking place uniformly across the city, but is in fact concentrated toward the eastern side of the city and to the southern portion as well. So what we're seeing is a tilt, if you will, in the population distribution of the city. The map that's there on this slide is built around the urban population clusters using definitions provided in official plans and working through from 1971, the darkest area where really the bulk of the growth was, was in the older part of the city, and then as we move forward, how the urban population and the urban growth has moved forward. So there's an absolute increase in the urbanization, but one of the other parts that, if you will, is a kind of a subtle component of that, is that those urbanized areas are connected to each other. There is not an isolated settlement a long way away, Bidbrook perhaps is the only exception to that, along with Water Down, that are not directly connected to this fabric of urban, urban life. So Hamilton has become something more than just the old city in one box and the suburbs in another, that both lines are being crossed in a number of ways. So when we look at the present ward structure, and I agree with comments that were made earlier, this was largely a solution or an arrangement determined at Queens Park and brought to Hamilton as part of the amalgamation arrangement. The provincial regulation established 15 wards, started with 13, ended up with 15, essentially created outside the city of Hamilton as the source of this model. It is one that maintained the eight wards in the original city of Hamilton that date back from the 1980s, and then seven wards were created in the remainder of the municipalities drawn together at amalgamation. That's the system we're working with. That's the system that is the basis for this discussion. In the course of our interim report and the discussions that we had, using the principles, we looked at those wards from the point of view of how well they meet the expectations set out in the principles, and again, the interim report discusses that in greater detail. And what we discover, of course, is that on the two principles related to population, this design simply does not fit. There are too many exceptions to make it one that we would want to see serving the interests of the city's residents. The others are a bit of a mix. Some parts of it work, some parts of it don't, and we've tried to highlight that in that interim report. What are the parts that people find reasonably plausible and appropriate, which parts are not? And we come up with the chart that's there of recognizing that the entire system is not something we dispose of, but there are parts of it that need to be attended to. And effective representation, which is this kind of summary view, we decide, or determine, rather, was not terribly successful because of some of the factors, and primarily two themes that come out of the larger judicial context, namely the dilution of representation, which is something that is quite unacceptable in the context of the Charter of Rights and the Equality provisions, and the idea of coherence that is less evident, certainly in the current Ward 11. So having looked at the current system and reminding you again, as I did in that previous slide, the current system said there were these hard lines. There was the old city, and that was one group, and there was this other group. And what we tried very hard to do in both the preliminary options and later on was to see, can we still use those lines, that city versus suburban, and try to meet these expectations? Can we still get a reasonable population distribution? Can we address some of these other drawbacks in, with, and keep those lines intact? And our conclusion was, no, you can't do that. You cannot continue to operate again in the light of the population distribution. So we set out two approaches to resolving or addressing some of the shortcomings that had been observed and that the community told us about. We started with a 15-ward option, and working toward population parity as a high priority, not the only priority, but a high priority, can we design a 15-ward system that will better address the flaws that had been identified in the first round? And we came up with a version that will do that. We also, in the course of the second round of consultations, offered a 16-ward option, and that was still possible under the terms of references we understood it. That, and again, it comes back to that question of representation primarily on the mountain. That's a point that had been identified. That's where the big ones are. Can we try to address that issue by carving that up into primarily in the center in the west into three wards and not two, and come up with a 16-ward option? And we found that that is a way to address some of those issues and providing better representation. The final report, there is a 15-ward option proposed, which adds that extra representation on the mountain, and still preserves, in our view, still preserves a place for rural Hamilton, especially on the western side, and don't forget that that area down in the southeast is rural only in part nowadays. It is clearly changing. And again, following the same principles, our view is that that 15-ward option goes a long way to addressing the shortcomings that had been identified in the current design, and by using a set of lines that, and a few points in a few places moves across the old city suburban boundary, and I would use that in quotation marks, that it can be reasonably successful. The 16-ward option, again, does the same sort of thing, and we end up with a slightly different design, primarily to deal with the eastern side of the city, where again, much of the growth is going to happen. We try to be prepared for that growth by adding an extra ward, and we discussed in the report why we believe that that is a plausible solution, or a plausible alternative, rather, for council to consider. And looking at these, this design, we discover that in fact, the population distribution is remarkably good, and that other factors are well addressed in the option, the 16-ward option that we are providing today. So the review suggests strongly that the existing ward boundary configuration does not meet the expectation of the guiding principles. And so our view would be that the city would be better served by an alternative ward boundary configuration, either keeping the 15 plus the mayor, or a 16-ward option plus the mayor as an alternative. The two options that are in that report, we believe successfully address the shortcomings identified in the present system, and primarily because they provide a better balance in population now and over the next three elections, while still providing significant representation to rural Hamilton, and the emerging neighborhoods across the city that were not there when the current system was designed. They are now addressed in that system. So we believe that if council makes a decision to move forward with a revised ward structure, obviously, a new bylaw would follow, and that would be something that would take this to its final step. Just a couple of other quick points. Yeah, I think those are the main things. We certainly recommend that council consider the adoption of a new ward boundary structure for the 2018 election. That's the formal presentation, and I'm sure that we're more than willing to respond to questions and comments.
Thank you for your presentation. We have a few speakers on our list, beginning with Counselor Farr.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I really only have a few, and I'm looking forward to hearing the discussion and more questions, I'm sure, and maybe even some ideas from us coming your way. First and foremost, through you, Chair, to whomever, you have two options before us, but there could have been more. Explain, I know you, did you shortlist to get to these two, and were there some that almost made the cut through you?
We provided a number of, many more than that in that first, or sorry, in the second round of public consultations. Asked people to comment on a number of versions of how to get to a good system of representation. Based on the responses we got to that, and a further analysis, we determined, and I think the scenario is, it's better to have two good choices than a number of less successful ones. We believe that what we've offered takes the best of the ideas that were out there and put them into a fairly clear choice for you to work with. So that determination, the bringing it down to two, was a result of what we heard and what we felt, how then we could do to tweak. I'm not sure, I can't recall. I don't think either of the two that are here are exactly the same as the ones that went out, but we took the ideas that people found workable and combined them into two choices.
And the ward option number 15 really focuses on one of the six criteria, the rep by pop, correct?
Not entirely, no. No, we do try, we've tried to ensure that each of these wards addresses the other concerns about community of interest, about transportation or logical boundaries, but certainly, population is not unimportant in there. We're again, recognizing that there is a bit of flexibility in there, but no, they're not, these are not just population-driven designs.
I was just going by the bullets on each, on the slide presentation where you say, a 15-ward option strives to optimize population parity, representation of population in parentheses, whereas on the 16-ward option, you say achieves a reasonable population balance by ward and preserves communities of interest while finding better effective representation than a 15-ward option. Can you elaborate?
Well, yeah, I think the main difference, or the main point to keep in mind in the 15-ward option is that, yes, we had tried to emphasize population parity rather than trying to stay within that, if you will, straitjacket of the old, of the old city boundary. So we put, we work out population, are there places where we can achieve population without having to stay within that, that old model, that kind of straitjacket, if I can call it that, or the old shoes that you've outgrown? or the old shoes that you've outgrown? By putting population there, we've set that part of the current system aside, not completely, but in a few cases where that growth pressure is happening. So, and then obviously with 16, a lot of the old scenarios or a lot of the old configurations stay in place, but we have a little more flexibility to try to address that. So we're simply addressing that in slightly different language.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Williamson. And I'm sorry.
Eric?
Derek, thank you.
Yes, Eric Purven.
Derek, Eric, sorry.
Eric Quintero.
In your presentation, you talked about growth trends that you looked at through 2026, and you said, quote, "comprehensive analysis," end quote. We had a delegate that was concerned that we should probably hold off making any decision until, I think it's February 8, 2017, three and a half months from now, because then we're going to get that long-form census data on that date. By the way, the census data is going to come out all next year, but that's the population date numbers, if I'm not correct, through you, Chair. Are you aware of that? Does that sound right?
Yeah, definitely. There will be a population and other census data coming out from the 2016 census next year in sort of different phases or stages of data release. Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a good question. Look, the city is always changing and growing. The study commenced in October of 2015. We clearly did not have the privilege or access to 2016 census data, nor do we have that information today. We did use 2011 census as our starting point of our analysis. We have, Watson and Associates has decades of experience doing growth forecasting and growth analysis work across the province of Ontario and beyond. And so for us to extend the population out to 2015, at that time, using recent development activity and building permit data, and using our own in-house growth modeling expertise, was a reasonable approach to use to come up with a 2015 base population that we feel very confident in. Obviously, the 2016 population, when it does come out from census, will definitely vary slightly from what we have modeled, there's no question about it. However, you have to also remember, keep in mind, the analysis that we're doing, that we are building in variance, plus or minus 25% in our analysis when we're looking at parity and balance of population by ward. And so if our baseline analysis is off by, you know, 1% or 2%, you know, it's not going to change ultimately our conclusions or our recommendations, even if we have the 2016 data today and could compare it against what we have identified in our report. So I think it's just important to keep that in context, that we do feel very confident in our baseline assumptions for population, and also, equally importantly, the growth trends that are presented and our future year population to 2026.
Excellent answer. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. Your confidence comes from this quote-unquote "comprehensive analysis," and that analysis. Final question through you, Chair. I didn't hear you mention, I'm assuming you did look at our current approvals. We've just recently approved a talk zoning, so we're talking about building up our transit corridor, that's thousands more. We add, we have a tall building study that's coming out soon. We have provincial targets at 40%. All of that you looked at, my assumption is through you, Chair.
That's right. It was a very comprehensive review, looking at opportunities to accommodate future population growth, not only within the built boundary through intensification, but also through greenfield development. So that meant looking at, you know, units and development approvals, opportunities for intensification. We had discussions with planning staff here at the city, as well as guidance that we have from the growth plan and from other city growth-related documentation.
And the key theme for me is, you know, yeah, your plus-minuses 25%, you wouldn't be surprised if you're out only though with the 2026 projections by 2% or 3%. Through you.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's obviously a different story, how that, you know, that when I put out the number 1, 2%, I was referring to, you know, the baseline analysis, you know, if we look at census data versus our growth modeling and understanding 2015 baseline conditions. If we're looking out to 2026, obviously, there's always, you know, a greater margin of, you know, potential discrepancy, only because we only know what we know today in terms of, you know, the phasing and timing of future growth and development within the city. And while we have modeled this, it's based on our best knowledge and information and understanding of future growth trends in the city, based on the information we have at hand. So obviously, I do have confidence in those numbers, but to speculate how close we will be by the time we get to 2026, I honestly can't answer that question.
So I just want to be absolutely clear here. 25% that you referenced was a plus-minus, was it not? You, yeah, so again, a nod from your counterpart.
Yeah, no, definitely. The variance plus or minus 25%, but that again is not talking to, that's just looking at what we consider a reasonable range of variance in the population balance by ward, either in the existing year or in the future year. And so the discussion on future growth is a little bit different from that.
It's Slide 8, right? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilor Farr. Counselor Maria Hearsel.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I guess I'm along the same lines, speaking to the question Councilor Farr raised on Slide 8. So I just want to clarify, because, you know, it strikes me as odd, I don't know if you can go to it, and I'll use Ward 10, so it's one I'm familiar with. So Slide 8, you're showing a Ward 10 decline by 2026 of population, is that correct?
It's basically demonstrating that the relative, it's actually not showing that there's going to be a decline in Ward 10, but what it's saying is that the wards share, the city population is going to be declining. And so obviously, the number of persons when compared to the average population in 2026, it's going to be lower than currently in 2015.
Okay, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I just want to also ask, because looking at this, and I know the number of developments that I have coming forward in Ward 10 may not be equal to Ward 11 or Ward 15, but the development that is coming is major intensification. And the province is directed now with 60% intensification, which I certainly have supported would be forward. So has that been reflected in these numbers?
Well, certainly, you speak to, you know, pending development and development that's coming online, and I assume you're referring largely to development along the waterfront.
Well, all over, we have three or four major developments coming, that one house 40 units.
Right, right. And certainly, any inventory or understanding of units and development approvals that were in place or pending as of October or late 2015 is captured in our analysis and factored into the growth analysis. And like I said before, we have taken, reflected intensification into the analysis. We recognize and appreciate that there will be additional population growth accommodated within the built boundary of the city, and that, of course, is being mandated through the growth plan. But also recognizing that our forecast doesn't go out to 2026, and that even the trends in intensification are going to evolve. And certainly, the amount of intensification that you are going to see in the city will increase over time, and so our analysis reflects that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thanks, Eric, and Gary, and Professor Williams, for your presentation and the work you've done up to now. Professor Williams and Gary Scanlon, I believe the two of you, as you made the rounds, I think we met way back early on, as you provided every member of council, I believe, an opportunity to provide some feedback. So if you don't mind, Robert and Gary, my questions would be more for you two, with all respect to Eric. And I'm just going to state upfront, I hope, Madam Deputy Mayor, that the conversation from today will continue. Is there any reason why it stops today, or from the consultant's standpoint, the conversation can't continue? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you. Gary?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, I don't think we stopped the process. We've tried to go through a process to the public and come down ultimately to two options. I think through this process, you need to make a decision. Are you happy with the existing ward structure, the way that we've, with the issues that we've identified? Do you want to do with a reconfigured 15? Do you want to move to 16? When you make a decision within one of those, if you're going with a 15 or 16, then we can focus on the lines. And I think that there's, you know, there's room for some refinement of the lines, but I think you really need to identify, would you like to see some refinements, some change? And if you do, do you want a 15, 16? And if you choose that, with the recommendations, which is going through quite an extensive process, is there still some refinements that you would like to see? Because this is your opportunity as the council as well to continue to feed to us.
I appreciate that, Gary. So can I kind of summarize, Gary, that what you said? Appreciate your indulgence, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm going to have just a series of questions and comments. Can I summarize what you said, that basically, in essence, there's three options before us? Status quo, if council chooses, a 15 ward boundary recommendation, either what you've presented, or, Gary, what you just commented on, that there can be refinements within the 15 ward boundary recommendation, or some refinements otherwise within a 15 ward concept? And thirdly, a 16 ward concept, either what you recommended, or again, through some feedback, some refinements as well? If I interpreted, Gary, what you said correctly, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, that those status quo, something in a 15 ward and something in a 16 ward concept is kind of the three themes, if you will?
That's correct. And I think when I talk refinements, I don't think I'm talking about a wholesale, you know, complete throw it out and start over again. I think there may be some refinements to the lines and such, but I think generally, what we provided is trying to capture the essence of the discussions and to balance all of the different factors. If there's, you know, move the lines, you know, four or five blocks here, or, you know, slight refinement to the lines, which means when you adjust one, you've got to adjust another, I think we can accommodate some of those subtle adjustments, but I think our recommendations with the, generally with those concepts are pretty close to what we are recommending.
Thanks, Gary. So can we just get clarified, Gary or Professor Williams, the number of citizens that overall participated in town halls? I know I just dropped in on one, you recall, I saw you gentlemen at Sackville Hill, I think that was in round one. I dropped in for about 20 minutes and didn't even participate, and just left after a short time. And I think, if I recall, there may have been a couple of dozen residents out for that particular round one consultation. So can I just get a flavor as to Eric, or whoever wants to answer that, please, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. Yeah, no, just for the record, between the two rounds of consultation, we had a total of about 280 attendees across 18 public open houses. So that included about 190 in the first round and 90 in the second round. In addition, we had a significant amount of online survey responses, because we did also survey the public through an online survey through the city's website, asking similar questions as we had asked in the public open houses. And through that means we had received 170 completed surveys that were also taken into account and reflected in our analysis. And as well, we had probably about a dozen or so email responses of a more informal nature that we also took into account in our work.
So thanks, Eric. So my quick math, 280, 170, 450, another couple of dozens, so we're back to around the 500, if you will, give or take, that launched the review. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be honest, Professor Williams, I thought that you and Gary and Eric were going to come back with more than the two options. Now, you say in round two, you went out to the public with a greater number of options, and maybe I misunderstood, I thought you were going to come back with somewhere in the ballpark of four to six. So again, can you just confirm how many you took to round two, and why you kind of narrowed down then to just the two? Because I'll be honest, I was surprised it was only two. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, please.
We took eight designs out in the second round, eight different designs, some of received virtually no support whatsoever. Nobody thought they would work, and we brought some of those to the exercise to respond to comments made in the first round. Can we try this? Can we try, can we try to work within the old boundaries, various things of that sort? And the feedback was quite mixed in some cases. And I think the message would be that the two general directions we're going here were the responses that most people found appropriate, desirable, whatever. And there was no point in bringing back that many. I'm not sure how often council was faced with a recommendation, say, pick one of eight. I mean, you may have a meeting all day today, but you'd be taking weeks to get down to one choice. We feel that, in fact, that the core of the issue, as Gary explained and as your question put, the core of the issue is, do you want to leave it the way it is, or do you want to fix the 15 in a way that we believe is successful and would be endorsed if it were ever appealed? Or do you want to push a little further and try 16? The reality is, those, many of those were detailed differences that we've tried to build on, and I don't think it would be productive to have a discussion of each and every one of those and a bunch of others and expect to get to an agreement.
Okay, thank you, Professor. Can you put up, segue now into my next question, can you put up the slide that shows the 15 ward option, please, Madam Deputy Mayor? Okay, now, Professor Williams and Gary, put Tom Jackson aside, just put me aside now. Quite frankly, you look at that map, and if I now took to a round three, if there was a round three of public consultations, and you see where you've now got Ward 9, which primarily has been represented by Counselor Conley this term, and you see where that now bleeds into half of Ward 6, basically, I believe, Upper Ottawa Street, east of Upper Ottawa Street, over to the upper Mount Albion area, if I now were to take your, that map to an East Mountain community meeting, I don't think quite, I think, first of all, my constituents, put myself aside, I think the residents of that area would be quite surprised that half of their East Mountain community is being hived off and given over to Upper Stony Creek. And secondly, the community of interest of the mountain community has lost a large portion there. So can I get a comment from one of you, please, in terms of how that came about, please, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Part of that, Counselor Jackson, has to do with trying to balance all of the principles. We tried a number of designs that kept, for example, a ward that would come down at the bottom there of the, at the Mount Brow. Tried to see how that would play out in the numbers. And the reality is, those would, you'd go back to create, you'd back to replicate the problem you're trying to solve. You'd end up with wards that are far too large in the mountain area, that it was simply no, we didn't find other plausible ways to do that dividing and still meet those other expectations. And that's exactly the kind of things that I think Gary was getting at. Is there a way to do that? We've tried, but if your sense is that that's something that must be addressed in a final solution, then we can perhaps see what could be done around that. But we were certainly not trying to deliberately divide the neighborhood, but to try to figure out how to juggle all of the various principles that were there. And this is again, this is a model which is also looking toward growth. Where is the growth going to happen? And it's not unlike the question earlier about the current Ward 10, proportionally, where will things change? That is also trying to, we're trying to incorporate that in what we've tried to do.
Okay, I think, so if the, thanks, Professor Williams, for explaining that. Again, I sincerely, knowing the mountain community and knowing how it's primarily very proud of the fact within the mountain, you have a west-central-east within our great city of Hamilton, again, I could only imagine the reaction of this particular proposal and half of that East Mountain community no longer being part of the mountain community. I appreciate your explanation and the struggle.
May I just, may I just stop commenting? That community is still going to be there. That community will still have its links through sports, libraries, schools, whatever. It's just for elector- electoral purposes. We've had to say, to create 15 units, we're gonna have to ask you to be represented by joining up with these other entities. But it is, it is not perhaps a perfect solution, but it is one that, again, with the list of principles at stake, we felt that that was the way we had to address it, given that that area to the west was, if you will, the trouble spot in this whole scenario.
I, anyways, Madam Deputy Mayor, if the conversation's continuing, I know, I think from the equitable standpoint across the Mountain, with you, Madam Deputy Mayor, having the largest ward population-wise, I think there, with the conversation continuing, there's opportunities within the 15-word system, if that ultimately is the way council wants to go, that we can solve that without, again, necessarily dissecting a portion of the community that have come to be part of each other's lives across the board. Effective representation, Professor, how do you argue, I'm thinking of the rural areas, Counselor Masuda's area, it's always been, that's always been the comparator for the rep by pop and the inequity across the system with Ward seven. And yet, in our Federation, of course, in Prince Edward Island, they have four federal seats for about 200,000 people. And I'll bet you the average riding across the country, I think, is around probably in the 80 to 100,000 category. So is that always part and parcel of the study and consideration as well, Madam Deputy, acting, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
I'm just not quite sure how to take the question apart, if I can put it that way. We worked very hard to ensure that there was a reasonable form of representation for the western part of the city, which is primarily rural. This is not population-driven in its entirety. We need to come to some concentration of population, but not to make it so vast that it could not be represented effectively. And we hear certainly many comments about the current size of the current Ward 14, which is probably a challenge, let's put it that way. We've tried, and some of the ones we looked at, that we set aside, would in fact perhaps increase that, and we've decided that's not the case. For example, under this model, we've looked at other ideas where the watered-down area becomes a more urban-focused and we add territory. And those are the kinds of trade-offs we felt we had to make, that it would be great to have an urban-focused ward, but where are we gonna put those people from Carolina North? If we stick them onto the current, the proposed Ward 13 here, then that becomes too big. So again, it's a bit like the Mountain question, that when you start to move them, there are ripples here and there. We felt, having tried numerous approaches to this, that this was a plausible way to balance those sets of problems, challenges, and still create an entity that we could defend as a viable unit of representation.
Thank you, Professor.
All right, thank you, Professor, Counselor.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Professor, for doing your best to explain. I was trying to use the Prince Edward Island example federally, that is much lesser in population, but as an island, still has four seats, where many people would say it should have only had one or two. But thank you. You've dovetailed that to best explain the situation. Could you put up the 16-word option, please, Professor Williams? Thank you. Madam Chair, with the growing population, in an ideal world, theoretically, I believe in the 16 wards, an extra ward. I just don't know what the appetite would be amongst the populace for an additional politician. Can you, you were, Gary, give me some indication from the two public consultations as to when this specifically obviously came up? And obviously, you came down, narrowing it down to two options, 15 or 16, which means an extra politician. What was the appetite in those public consultations for adding a politician, Professor?
Thank you, Professor. Through the chair, please.
If you go back to the alternatives that were set out in that interim report, there were a number, there were at least three to four 16-word options. My sense is that the reaction was that, gee, this solves a lot of problems. Primarily, the population balance can be better achieved, partly because the numbers are a bit low. And we felt that there was an appetite for a model that provided better equity, and that a 16-word model would do that. And we tried two or three versions of that, where we had one, I think, with five wards on the mountain, but again, created other complications elsewhere. But we felt that at least putting that out to you as an alternative was a plausible one. And we list some of the points in this final report. The population of the city has basically grown by this, almost the equivalent of another ward since amalgamation. Why should representation not stay in sync with that? The cost, we had a bit of a debate about what the percentage of the cost is. We suggest in the report it's 0.1%. I think it's, in fact, much, much less than that. The absolute dollar cost is really not at all significant in terms of the city's overall budget. It also creates a different, slightly different dynamic around the table, because you would now have 17 people, including the mayor, as opposed to the current 16, which can, I believe, from time to time, has led to a drawn vote. 17, that's, there are other ways to operate with 17. So there were a few reasons why we felt that you should at least be thinking about it, growing with, the council growing with the city, and addressing, conveniently, appropriately addressing some of the problems that led to the need for the review in the first place.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Professor. I think my last question, so I'm sure, Professor and Gary, I'm sure you heard a lot, and those of us who don't represent the lower-city wards, from time to time, hear from downtown advocates, hear from downtown residents, from time to time, about how the unfairness of sometimes the Mountain and suburban representatives, and taken in totality, can outnumber the four or five lower-city wards in terms of what they feel is most important issues for them, that have come and gone from time to time, and especially when the Mountain and suburban colleagues, for their own justified reasons and their own minds, on behalf of their own people, have felt that they could not support something that lower-city advocates felt were important to their communities. How do either one of these recommendations address that? Did that not come out at any public consultations, Gary or Professor? In other words, I'm sure you must have heard, in fact, I remember discussing with both of you when you were in my office, somebody had once even suggested, I think, like a pie-shaped type of, across the whole city, you know, with 15 wards, from Lake right up to Airport, Guaynona to Flambeau, which logistically may have been extremely difficult. But neither one of the 15 or 16-word recommendations, you basically still have your four lower-city wards, and for those who live in the downtown, who from time to time, if you will, resent when representatives from beyond the core vote on matters that aren't exactly to their liking, I don't see how the 15 or 16-word recommendation addresses that? Or was it a negligible, was it not really a consideration, Gary or Professor?
Gentlemen, Gary, would you like to tackle that?
Well, through you, Madam Chair. As part of the, some of the options that we put out, we tried to vary. I mean, it's, once again, you've got the population there, existing versus future. And we did try and stratify it a little bit different, looking more at the wards east and west, instead of just being north and south, as they're somewhat configured right now. And in the discussions and in the rankings, actually, they scored poorly.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, you know, we tried to take some of the things that we talked about and provide some variance in there. And if you recall, when we went through the report card, we asked people to take a look at all of the options, provide us their comments of what they like about them and what they don't like. So, once again, from the feedback that we've had, both, you know, outside and inside, you know, Mountain and the lower Mountain, you know, these, this is the input that we got. And that's part of what helps us focus the ultimate recommendations.
I think, Gary, you provided the feedback that I was looking for. Thank you very much. So, Madam Chair, those are the series of my questions. I'm pleased that the, first of all, thank you again to Watson and Associates for undertaking the review. I'm pleased to hear that the, hopefully, the conversation from today will continue if we need to provide that motion or directive. And again, I believe that some of us, when we met with you, within the 15 and/or 16-word structure, have suggestions further that might still answer and achieve what you are suggesting for the community in the future, Madam Chair, but not necessarily, like the one I gave as an example, that would necessarily cause a fair bit of division within a particular existing community. Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks again, Gary and Professor, and Eric. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So just so everyone's aware, I have Counselors Whitehead, Conley, myself, Partridge, but first up is Aiden Johnson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Am I correct in understanding that both the 16 counselor option and the 15, through you, Madam Chair, both the 16 counselor option and the 15 counselor option are perceived by our advisors as equally democratic? And I can, you know, I can say more about what I mean by that if you want me to, but any definition of the word democratic I would provide would be kind of as good as yours. So that's my question. I would love to hear your answer.
Professor, please?
Thank you. Equally democratic, I think on the face of it, I would probably say yes. They meet slightly different priorities, perhaps, and slightly different ways of delivering democracy, if I can call it that. But I think both of those are approaches that are quite consistent with, for example, the way the municipal board has understood representation should work in Ontario municipalities. They offer slightly different responses to the imbalances that we believe are there now.
So, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. From the perspective of democracy, what are the advantages and disadvantages of the 16 counselor option? And what are the advantages and disadvantages of the 15 counselor option?
Professor, please?
All right. Part of it comes to what I suggested a moment ago in terms of decision-making around the table. Having more voices and, in effect, an uneven number is seen by some municipalities as a desirable model, so that you're not going to get deadlocked, and you can actually reach decisions if need be. But it is also simply saying that more people should be represented by more people. I would think I would simplify it that way to say, and again, that's the model we use nationally, that as our population grows, we add more seats so that the number of people being represented in each electoral area is kept within a reasonable, at a reasonable level. So going to 16, I think, would not be an inappropriate direction to go, given the kind of growth that has happened since amalgamation.
Counselor?
And what makes the 15 counselor option more or less equally democratic?
In itself, as a design, it meets the principles. The starting point is whether you believe you want to have an extra voice around this table. And that's not something you can quantify. That's your sense of how decision-making ought to work within your city. In itself, as a design, we believe it works very well. But the other question, if you will, the composition of council question is a separate matter that you yourselves have the power to make under the Municipal Act, and we're not telling you to go one direction or the other. We're saying, if you want to increase, here's one that will work. If you don't want to increase, here's another one that will work.
Counselor?
Thank you. If I'm understanding of what you're saying, then, through you, Madam Chair, you're not saying that it is significantly more democratic necessarily to add another voice. It is an option. I'm just trying to get my head around the ethical aspect of the question.
Professor?
Thank you. I think it is an option. That's the way I would put it. You can choose to govern your city with 17 people, or you can choose to govern it with 16. That's not something that's empirical. That's not something you can clearly say is weighted one way or the other by some abstract notion. It's what will work to give your city good governance. And those are questions far beyond the scope of what we were asked to look at. We simply found that adding 16, adding a 16-seat allows us to address some of the issues. And so if you feel that that is in the interests of the citizens of the city, then it certainly, what we offer you will work.
Counselor?
Is there a particular, so, I know, through you, Madam Chair, that, and directed to you, Madam Chair, that our team isn't telling us in code or explicitly that the 16 counselor option is better. So that's clear, and I want that, I want my knowledge of that to be clear before I ask my question. So I know that our team is neutral. So my question is this: if you were to make an argument for the 15 counselor option, devil's advocate, if you will, what would that be?
Professor, what would that look like?
And sorry, just one more point. So I've heard what I think is a clear argument for the 16 counselor option. I'm wondering, what's the good argument for the 15 counselor option?
You're used to it. And there is a certain sense that you're comfortable with governing the city with that many elected officials. And that's not what a ward boundary is about. A ward boundary is about, if you want 15, here's how to elect them. If you want 16, here's how to elect them. But our goal is not to give you a case to be made to change the way you make your decisions and how you operate this particular council. So we very carefully said, we found some things, and again, because it was not a foregone conclusion that it should be some other number, tried it out, found that it did resolve many of the problems. So, all right, maybe it's time to think about moving on from 15 to have a larger number, given that you're now a larger community. But I'm not here to say that we, you know, would definitively say this one's better than that one. Our view is that if you make that choice, what we've offered you are things that will work to meet that expectation. But that's really a discussion that is not about how you elect them. It's your, the prior question is, do we want that many?
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, when I heard the gentleman say, "You're used to it," who did he mean by "you"?
I was being slightly facetious. I think part of what we discover in many of these reviews is that there's a comfort level around how things are done. And that partly includes how many bodies there are around the table. And your first delegation this morning talked about pushing it off, pushing it off. My sense is that what we're looking at is, there's a way to do things that people have become used to in the amalgamated city of Hamilton. Part of it is having 15 people. That's not to say that 15 people should be the number in perpetuity. Part of what we're asking you is to think about, all right, what's the best way to govern the city going forward? It's not core to what we do, but if you think that's the right way to go, then here's a model that will work. But it is, as I said, it was slightly tongue-in-cheek, because I know that moving toward change is sometimes a slow process. And people are often happy just to say, well, let's just leave it and not get into that discussion. And that's a personal perspective, based on a number of the cases that I've dealt with, that people are not very likely to want to make radical changes, and even one seat could be seen as a radical change. So, as I said, it was slightly facetious.
Counselor?
So, through you, Madam Chair, what I'm hearing, if I'm not mistaken, is that not making a change in terms of increasing the number of counselors by one is, so the status quo isn't that bad, or actually stronger than that. If I'm understanding what I'm being told, the status quo is, from a democratic perspective, equally as good, more or less, as adding one. And the fact that you made a joke is no problem at all. Jokes are very valuable. There is truth in jokes. I'm just trying to get at what the truth in your joke is.
Professor?
Let me try that one. Okay, the status quo as to the composition... Let me try that one. Okay, the status quo as to the composition is what I would see as open to discussion. The status quo in terms of the present wards, we firmly conclude is not defensible any longer.
Through the chair, please.
Oh, sorry. We would argue that staying at 15 under the current wards would be very difficult to defend should it be appealed. Keeping 15 is fine. I mean, at a kind of almost technical level, if you were to decide to change your composition of your council from 15 to 16, you would need to pass a separate bylaw, and that's covered under a totally different part of the Act than changing the boundary. So, it's a secondary part, but it has to be folded in together with this decision. But that in itself is a separate decision that council has the power to make. If you decide to do that, then we've offered you something to help elect those 16. If you choose not to change from 15, we believe you should still change the way you elect them, and that's what we've offered you in one of the options.
Thank you.
Thanks. Madam Chair, when I heard the quite funny joke, "Because you're used to it," I took it to mean, in significant part, that we, the people of Hamilton, are used to a balance of urban, suburban, and rural interests, as reflected in our 15 councillor constitution. Am I misunderstanding the joke?
Go ahead, Professor, please.
Short answer, yes, you are. I did not say anything about how that 15 is composed. And indeed, our argument is, the eight-seven model is not terribly successful any longer. But keeping it at 15 is something that could be sustained if you wish to govern yourself with 15. And if you look at the option that's here, that eight-seven idea is softened because the city has changed. The city is not, eight seats belong to this part and seven belong to that. That seven, if you will, is changing. And it's not going to be old city versus suburban communities. It's about communities that are, have much more in common with the old city in terms of the type of housing and the type of development that goes on. And we're simply saying, look at the city as it is now and not worry about eight and seven. If you want to keep it at 15, that's fine, but we believe that eight and seven creates significant difficulties in meeting effective representation for the citizens.
Counselor, does that answer your question?
It does. And I think I have two questions left. The first is a statement, through you, Madam Chair, that I think our team could just answer with kind of a nod, to make sure that I'm understanding things right. Our team of advisors is telling us that the current borders of our wards need to change in the interests of having a government in Hamilton that is as democratic as it should be. Not a good, right?
Okay, gentlemen?
Sorry. The nod is my answer, and I'm totally pleased with it. And my last question is, I heard earlier through colleagues questioning that waiting on 2016 census data would not make a significant difference to your recommendations. I just want utter clarity.
Okay. Eric?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. And, Madam Chair, I have some further thoughts, but they're not really questions for our team. So, I'm just gonna...
Go right there.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, so next on the list is Counselor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand why we didn't look at reducing councillors' wards. Because numbers in regards to equity, that is not the number of the population. It's about making sure that there's equal, equitable, effective government. And there are some areas across this country that have an average of 55,000 population within a municipal boundary. And just dovetailing on that, I'm looking at the options. It seems that you are shifting the population where currently the population numbers are greater on the mountain. And through this redesign on the 15th option, you in fact are now, have almost 10,000, 10,000 less in Ward Seven than you would have in downtown, in, say, Ward Four, Three, Two. So now, what you've just done through this process is you dramatically shifted the population balance, where you've shrunk the number so significantly on the mountain that you've got a 10,000 population average differential between the lower wards and the mountain wards. I don't see that as a balanced approach.
Okay, Professor, or gentlemen, Eric, would you like to talk on that, please?
Well, I guess the challenge is, is that currently you have three wards on the mountain that are clearly, the population is too high to accommodate only three wards. And clearly, it's either three or something larger, four. You can't have a fraction of a ward very easily without having broader issues on the mountain in terms of slicing communities. So, yeah, we have four, we have four wards on the mountain in the 15-ward option. But I think the data, the population and the metrics speak for themselves in terms of population balance. All 15 wards achieve parity, at least within the variation that we've identified. And so, yes, there's always going to be nuances where the numbers aren't going to be exactly hitting the average, but they are within the acceptable range that's been identified. And so, we feel that it does achieve a good balance overall.
So, 10,000 difference, so Ward Seven going from the largest ward will become one of the smallest wards as a result of this rebalancing?
Well, actually, I'm just looking at the population data on Figure 12 of Page 29. And Ward Seven in current year would achieve a variance of 1.14. So, it's actually marginally higher than the actual optimal average, but well within the acceptable range. And by 2026, it falls very close to the optimal average of about 40, with a population of about 40,000 versus the desired population, if you're looking strictly from a parity perspective, of 42,000. So arguably, it's very well balanced.
Sorry, we're obviously not looking at the same page. Page 34, it shows Ward Seven, 2015 at 33,000. It shows, for example, Ward Five at 44,000. So, that's a, you know, 10,000 difference. And then actually, in 2026, because Ward Seven's capped out pretty well on development, so you have it actually shrinking to 31,000 from 33,000. So, you're still looking at a 10,000 difference.
Okay, so you're referring to the ward options, the 16-ward option. I referenced the 15-ward option, population balance, in my earlier comments. So, that's obviously a different table. Well, I mean, clearly, there's going to be some variations in the population. But again, in both options, the 15-ward and the 16-ward, the population of Ward Seven is within the acceptable range of variance.
So, we were told yesterday, or to be truthful, that they upgraded the population growth 2041, that with the LRT, they're expecting between, I think it was, was it 400 to 800 units per year, just in the downtown corridor, over 7,000 people in growth. Which, by the way, is a shift from the original numbers you used, because when Metrolinks did the original report, they had lower numbers originally as well. In fact, I believe the Metrolinks original numbers were the same type of numbers that you may have been using. Those numbers being upgraded in the last month or so, two months, in regards to these reports. Are they reflected here?
Well, our growth assumptions are based on information that we had as of late 2015. And so, that was what it was based on. Now, I will qualify that by saying that we did take into account a moderate amount of intensification over the next decade within the built boundary and largely within the urban centre of Hamilton, taking into account the fact that you have a proposed or planned on LRT being built or will be built, that will obviously see increased intensification along those corridors. And certainly, that is reflected in our analysis. The other really important aspect about this is to understand that intensification and the targets for it, including the development that the LRT is expected to facilitate, is a long-term, will happen over the long term. Our forecast only goes out to 2026. It's my understanding that construction of the LRT won't even be completed until 2024, which is two years prior to that period that we're looking in. And ultimately, based on that information alone, a significant amount of future intensification identified by the province and that will need to be accommodated within the built boundary will happen during the latter half of the forecast period out to 2041. And so, we expect a moderate amount of intensification between now and 2026, with that accelerating post-2026.
Okay, so clearly, this is over a 10-year timeframe in regards to reviews, and you're suggesting that just the actual implementation or the actual running of the LRT is outside that timeframe. You couldn't contemplate that in your numbers?
Well, we factored it in, in the sense that we anticipate that there will be an LRT in operation post, you know, 2024. And we've made a provision for a moderate amount of intensification between now and 2026, but recognizing that a greater share of intensification will occur once the LRT is in operation and also in line with the general maturing of the municipality, where just generally, there will be a shift in development activity from the greenfield areas to the built boundary as a proportionate share over the longer time horizon out to 2041.
So, I appreciate that. So, back to the premise of my first, beginning of my question. And I know that I attended a couple of sessions and certainly the one in Ward Eight. It was clear that they didn't think they were getting underrepresented, even though we're one of the larger wards. And I think I'm hovering around the 54,000, 55,000 population, back to the number I talked about. If a council could adequately and effectively represent 55,000 people, then why would we not look at a 55,000 number and shrink the wards down to, say, 11?
I think the issue there really has to do with how much councillors in individual level are prepared to take on. Not every councillor may be prepared to serve 55,000 people. But the reality is, we're not building this around who the incumbents are and what their role is. We're trying to find a number that is equitable across the city. And I think the other part is that we did not hear, that I can recall, anyone saying we need fewer seats around the table. That was not, there was no traction, if you will, for that model of representation. So, it was 15, or as we, in response to Counselor Johnson's questions, the possibility of 16. But the idea of a radical or even a minor adjustment in the number of city councillors was not a scenario that came up in discussions with councillors in any significant way or in the public consultation.
So, in fairness, I didn't hear anyone screaming for, you might have a minority, but certainly not the majority supporting more councillors either. So, and the way those sessions worked, it really didn't lend itself to having the discussion whether we should be actually shrinking councillors opposed to growing council. It didn't really lend itself to that kind of discussion. So, again, you were making it about me, and I don't want to make it about me. That's unfortunate, because one of the questions I did ask is that there are communities, municipalities, with councillors representing 55,000 people. So, it's not just about Ward Eight. This is across North America. And they're effectively representing those 55,000 people. So, the question then becomes, why wouldn't we look at that as an option as well?
I come back, if I may, Madam Chair, come back to some of the earlier discussion about the number. That is really not what we were assigned to do. If you and your colleagues believe that Hamilton could be better governed by a 10-member council or a 12-member council or whatever, that's certainly within your prerogative. I think the perspective I would take is that other municipalities have made a decision about the size of their council based on a number of factors that really don't enter into what we're looking at. It may have to do with the fact that they're in a two-tier structure. It may have to do with the need to provide representation on a regional council. There were all kinds of reasons why that number is calculated at the end of the division between the population and the number of wards. It's not, the province and no other jurisdiction has said you must have X number of people or you should have, or even it would be great if you want. That's entirely, to me, a local decision about how many is the right number of councillors. And if you had said to us at the beginning of this process, "We want a council of 10 members," fine, we would have gone out to do that. We heard 15. There was, you know, there was...
Well, just for clarification, I did. I didn't say that this should be less, right from day one.
Okay, right. So, but that was not part of the general direction. We take direction from council on this. That was not the general direction. So, we did not move in that direction and only came to the 16 through the kind of scenario that we talked about, that I talked about with Counselor Johnson, that we suddenly realized in playing around with these, that we could actually solve more problems by going to one more. And, you know, that's the story behind that, if I can...
So, I appreciate that. But I mean, I think it's clear that you could solve the same equity problems even if you went down to 11 councillors, because it's all about what the numbers would be from ward to ward to ward. So, I just want to acknowledge that that was another way of beating that equity target. The, so, and the other acknowledgement I think I received, because we have examples across North America, is that a council could effectively represent 55,000 people.
Again, how well it's, if you're talking about calculations and balance and whatever, sure, I'm sure we could find those kinds of things. How well it works in the particular community is a subjective matter which may have a bearing. We don't know whether those communities are interested in making a change for some reason. But, you know, it can be done. If you wanted 10, I'm sure we could find a way to do it.
Yeah, I think, sorry, Mr. Brown, Chair, that's the point I'm making, is I understand the community dynamic. I just want to get acknowledgement, because they exist, that elected officials could appropriately, effectively represent 55,000 people.
They do exist, yes.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, because we had this conversation at the beginning of this process, and I'm looking at these options and the 15-ward option, and I mentioned this with one of the delegations, that there's area rating currently on our transit system. And so, all the suburban councillors represent a community that have a tax policy that represents a different formula than the urban course. So, I'm looking at this, I don't know, I mean, I can't wait till Mike Ziegarek starts breaking down the cost implications of your, because you said there is very little cost implications. I would suggest, when I'm looking at this map, that there's significant areas currently under the area rating, for example, 14, which would take in areas that are not area-rated. So, do those areas not area-rated get harmonized with the people that are area-rated? Or do the areas that get area-rated now are harmonized with the areas that are non-area-rated? And fundamentally, how do you understand, when you talk about community of interest, how in the heck can a councillor be in a situation with this configuration of representing two significant fundamental tax issues within the ward without finding themselves in a conflict?
Through you, Madam Chair. I understand the question regarding having a councillor that may have one tax policy for one area and another tax policy for other. I think there may be, I think there may be situations where there is some variation currently. I don't think the boards reflect the exact configuration of your tax policy. I think there may be some differences currently. But I have gone through... But I have gone through a number of municipalities, most recently Greater Napanee, for example, where we've gone through, revisit tax policy, consider the merits of how they're doing it, and considering potential change. And in that particular, I just used that one because that was just past two months ago, the councillors that were representing, were representing both urban and rural areas. So they weren't focused necessarily on the fact that they had, they've got five council members, sorry, plus a mayor, but they have five, and three of them are split on, they have both the urban and the rural areas. Throughout that process, never had a discussion where the individual councillors felt conflicted because of the tax policy. What they were more concerned with is what are the benefits that are being received by the individual constituents? So do the urban members receive a different level of service and different services versus the rural members of the community? So a lot of my discussion was always focused there, and in the past, honestly, I haven't had major conflicts raised by the fact that representatives had to balance the constituents because we normally tried to focus on the benefits that are being received through the tax policy.
So the way the tax policy works here, not like Napanee, is that the outlying areas pay a different formula, kilometers of service within their particular urban areas. The rural area doesn't pay anything else because they don't get transit.
Correct.
So, clearly, they're not really impacted by the tax bus because they're not ever going to have transit. But the urban areas have a completely different formula, which is still a bone of contention and a debate around this chamber. But clearly, what you just did is you put those areas that have that benefit at the, by the way, there's a lot of residents in the neighborhood right across the street that are not a lot happy about the fact that they got that benefit. So now you've created a community of polarized positions on a particular tax policy, and you combine them into one ward.
I understand that.
Thank you. Those were my questions.
And my only, my only response is, yes, we've dealt with this before, and quite often, the policies are based on benefit received, and there are instances where councillors have to balance the tax policy between two different members of the community.
So, it's on the councillors. I mean, at the end of the day, this is about democracy and it's about the residents. And I'm talking about a polarized position amongst the residents. I think councillor Ferguson very outfully talked about, there's still a bit of a hangover with the force amalgamation. There are people receiving benefits for good reasons, and this council decides to extend that policy, will pass this term of council because of the polarization and the heat on that issue. What you are suggesting now, respectfully, is that we take and combine those neighborhoods into one ward. I mean, I don't know what you're anticipating as a community of interest, but I suggest to you humbly, that is not a community of interest in those current circumstances.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Conley.
Thank you. Some of the things I was going to say is said by a councillor, avoid it. The first thing, did you look at, through the chair, the new urban boundaries that are probably going to be developed in the Upper Stony Creek and Landbrook area in the next two or three years? The urban boundary will be moved, and they're expecting over several years, over 20,000 new houses being built there? Did you look at that scenario?
Madam Chair, yes, we did. You're referring to the Alphrida urban expansion on the upper mountain, the Stony Creek area. And yes, we did include that in our growth analysis in a fair amount of detail, and certainly identified it as a major growth node over the coming decades, and that is reflected in our growth forecast.
So, I'm going to be very procl- my ward would be in 26, 50,000 from the current 30,000, and that's not counting, is that counting the urban boundary change, or is that not counting the urban boundary change?
All the growth analysis that's reflected in all the tables in our study, including the evaluation of the existing ward structure and any options that we presented, the population numbers that are included in those tables include the anticipated urban boundary expansion for Alphrida and the associated population growth that's expected to materialize over the next decade.
And I want to go back to urban, to area ratings again, because the changes you're suggesting really does split up some wards in half, that half the ward would be paying more taxes than the other half the ward, significantly more, like $200, $200 a year more, just because of a boundary change. Now, how do you justify that to the people? They're not getting any extra service. You keep saying service. They're not getting any extra service.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think if we don't change the boundaries and you have a natural expansion of your urban area, the councillor in the ward that has, you know, if they're 100% rural, at some point, as the urban encroaches into their area, they're going to have to deal with that issue. So it'll be a, it'll be a natural evolution that they'll have to deal with, and tax policy can change over time. I'm not saying that it isn't important, I'm just suggesting that as the configuration, the amount of development changes over time, if you're just doing it on tax policy, it'd be very difficult to keep up with your year-to-year tax policies.
Well, that's been always an issue when we're trying to even change boundaries and when we talk among ourselves about, there's little niches that 100 houses are in somebody's ward that probably should be in person beside it, makes a lot of sense, but it's always been stopped because of area ratings. And when you start putting $200, 4%, 5% increases in taxes, you're going to get more than Doug, that's not right.
I understand that. But as I say, I mean that where the developments are occurring are, they're occurring into the existing rural areas, they're starting to take on more and more of the urban development, and that'll be a natural issue for that councillor to have to deal with, is that the evolution of growth will start to impact on the decisions they're going to have to make into the future.
But the area rating will be for the area that's already not paying the total amount, and so that will just continue on to those areas. There won't be a tax change because we put a new survey in. It's basically, the issue is old city suburbs when amalgamation came in, because there's a lot of neighborhoods or that. We wanted to keep the same, I guess. And I think it's going to, I just want to know, did you look at area ratings when you did these, to see where the boundaries are for area ratings, and to see how you can work within those area ratings, so you're not affecting people, not just with boundaries, because, you know, whatever the boundary is, we're going to accept it or not accept it at the end, but we want the smoothest transition, I would think. I mean, I'm saying we, however we change it, I want the smoothest transition that we can have, and this is not a smooth transition as I see the way it is right now.
Through you, Madam Chair. We were looking, not necessarily, the tax policy wasn't the pure driver. What we were looking at was the more urbanized development within the city versus the rural, and quite often, the services. The servicing will follow the nature of that development, so that as you urbanize, you would logically, an area that doesn't, and I'll use transit perhaps as maybe the best example, if there's an area that doesn't have transit, 10 years from now, you've now got 6, 8,000 people. I would assume that then that area will now have transit service and then be paying the transit levy. So, looking at the, looking at the urban versus rural was, to some extent, perhaps a surrogate for some of those decisions, but we did not take today's tax policy and draw the line based on today's tax policy. We looked at urban versus the rural communities, and assuming that a lot of the tax policy will evolve over time to reflect the nature of the constituents in those individual areas.
It does, through you, Chair, it doesn't actually work like that. For instance, Ward 9, our taxpayers pay for usage of the buses. Buses are in the area rate. So if I use the bus and we use 400 kilometers of buses, I pay a certain rate. If it goes to 500, I pay a certain rate. That's not the way it is for the rest of the old city of Hamilton. So, it's never, it's never an idea that we are paying all of it at this point, but we're only getting the service that we paid for too. And there's no guarantee, just, and I know this has got nothing to do with boundaries, but there's no guarantee, if I was paying the whole shot, I'd get any more service. So there's not, there's not that assumption that one weighs off the other.
And as I say, Madam Chair, through you, we looked at, over time, the services will evolve and the tax policy will evolve. To prejudge now, 10 years from now, and start to, you know, develop a boundary solely on what we perceive 10 years from now would be the tax policy is not exactly what we did. What we did was focus on the issue of the urban versus the rural, assuming that there'll be refinements to the tax policies with respect to those, those different constituents within the board, the ward boundaries. So, that's the only way I can answer it. We did not definitively, no, we did not define tax policy as the succinct policy, but considering the urban versus the rural, and an evolution of tax policy could be included in that evaluation.
I think you're just bringing up pre-amalgamation again, because I think you have to understand that people in the suburbs aren't over that yet, and never will be. And then, and then to push other money on, just to make it equal all the way through the city without getting the services, is not right, and you're forcing more, more people in the pre-amalgamation area to be upset when we're trying to blend everything in together and trying to be one city, one happy city, but I'll bet you there's not a week goes by that somebody says to me...
Through you, Madam...
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Somebody says to me, "I wish we never did this stuff." So, go ahead.
Well, all I can respond, Madam Chair, through you, is that tax policy was not the driver. And I understand your comments, but that was not the, that was not the focus. We focused on the urban versus the rural. How your tax policy evolves over time will be something that will occur.
Okay, there will be, and I'm not going to put it out yet, but I'm going to put a motion on to refer this back for some further studies and to get councillors' opinions on these, not just the topic of the day, but maybe drawing the maps that they think are relevant. In my last second of the session, I went to this meeting, so told the people, "Don't say anything, because you're the councillor, so we don't want you to influence the people here." I just want to let you know that, just generally, here, that's, I don't appreciate that. It's going to be Democrat, I should be able to say what I want, good or bad, whether I'm here or not here, but, so I stopped going to...
Thank you, councillor Conley. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And to pick up on what the previous speaker just said, I too went to the meeting, and something similar was mentioned to me. However, I paid absolutely no attention to it, but I did stay in the background for a little bit of time until things started to get a little out of hand, and I think at the end of the day, the professor was glad I did stay for a little bit of time to calm everybody down, because I really needed my residents to participate and to be part of that process. So, most of my questions have been answered. I had questions on the area rating, so thank you for asking that. Folks, sorry, I can't hear. I'm speaking, but I can't hear. Thank you. For that, Professor, thank you. And also, the comment was made that there was an expectation that a couple more options would come back, and I too felt the same way, that, you know, with the two here, I expected to see at least a couple more. But, so, I have two more questions, or have questions, and one is, you mentioned previously that with the, if we did go with an additional ward, that a new bylaw would need to be passed. We understand that, but you also mentioned that there would be another process that would need to happen, and I believe it was around the election process. If you could just expand on that, I just wasn't quite clear what you meant by that.
Yes, Madam Chair, the, there are two parts of the municipal act that have a bearing on who sits around this table. Section 217 deals with lower-tier and single-tier municipalities, gives the power to council by bylaw to determine the number of members of council and how they are to be elected, that is, in wards or at large or some other, right? So that required a bylaw, would require a bylaw to say, at the next election, the city of Hamilton would elect 16 councillors in wards. It could be as simple as that. That's one part of it. The second part would be, if we're going to have 16, the bylaw then says they will be elected in wards that have the following parameters. So that's section 222. The first part is a self-contained entity. You pass that bylaw, that's the end of the story. The second, the bylaw under the second provision is open to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board. So, they're two, they're interlocking, but technically, they're two different questions. If you simply pass a bylaw that says, "We're going to use these wards if there's 16," and you haven't passed the other, right, then something will be out of the way, and I'm not quite sure who gets to solve that one, but they really are technically two separate questions.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and, right, I guess the other point is too, that regardless, whatever we pass could end up at the Ontario Municipal Board.
On how you're electing councillors, yes. If you pass a new bylaw, there is an appeal process that is built into the legislation. There must be notification of the bylaw, and then there is an appeal period for anyone to take that to the board, who may object to the particular configuration that you've adopted, yes.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, so that would be if the boundaries were changed, or not?
Madam, yeah, if there's no bylaw, you can't appeal it.
Right.
However, if there is no bylaw and members of the community, and council refuses, or in effect doesn't, then take the city to the municipal board to request that the boundaries be changed, and you would have to go defend, city end, in effect, doing nothing.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. The Madam Chair, in going through the report, under the public consultation around one workshops, I did attend, it was one held in February, Eric Howell, one held in June, and one held in June, and I did attend the one in...
In our analysis, some reason it's not included in those final reports, we will definitely look into that and make sure that it is included.
Thank you, Eric, I appreciate that, Madam Chair, but, I mean, in fact, your representation with my residents is making sure that their voices are heard and that they're at least included in the documents that this council is deliberating on and writing on or not. So that has to be a little bit of concern. Perhaps you didn't forward this type of information?
Yes.
I just believe that if we're going to be making decisions, and we did get the public input, we requested it, it was part of the mandate or the project itself to include those opinions. I would need to think that the residents showed up and had spent some time, three hours, I believe, was at each one, and yet the comments are not available here for anyone to see. So I'll leave that with you, if you could get back to me on that. The last, Madam Chair, the last... The last question I have is on the guiding principles page, and I'm sorry, the pages aren't numbered, in the report, it talks about the voting result on the guiding principles at the round, at the first round of the meetings. at the first round of the meetings, if I can say that. And if I'm understanding this correctly, it has a list, including Eric Howell and Waterdow, and Waterdow is not on the list again, but it does include Whirlplaine, Harbridge, Old Beasley, so all of the other locations where there were meetings held. And the rankings, if one is to be recognized as the priority going down from there, effective representation was scored at number one, community or diversity of interests was scored as number two, geographic and topographical features scored as number three, and rep by top was down on the list at number four. So I'm just wondering, what does that mean then? And how did you take that information? And those are the priorities that were scored by the people who attended those workshops, how did that impact? Because they're saying number one, two, and three, which are pretty high up on the list, if I'm reading that correctly, had nothing to do with representation by population. And the reason that I'm asking that, Madam Chair, is certainly, again, 70% of my ward is in the rural area. We have issues with green belt, Clean Water Act, and they are significant issues that don't necessarily impact the rest of the city, other than the rural areas. And so I'm just wondering, those rankings, how did you use those rankings in coming up with your recommendations?
Okay, Madam Chair, yes, I mean, you have identified the results from the quote-unquote voting of the public open house workshops that were held. And yes, those are the order and responses that we received. And clearly, you know, the numbers were relatively high for those four, effective representation of community or diversity of interest, geographical and topographical features, but recognizing the representation by population was very close in terms of number of quote-unquote votes to the second and third place guiding principles. Now, I have to qualify this table in that we also had the online survey responses that we received for that round of consultation. And in that round of consultation, we had a survey, online survey, we also asked the same questions as presented here in terms of prioritizing the guiding principles. And so the result from that analysis was amalgamated or merged with the results from the public workshop information that we're discussing here now, to come up with an aggregate overall assessment of the prioritization of guiding principles. And that is presented in the final report in, I just want to find the page here.
The pages aren't numbered, so I'll take a copy.
It would be in actual need for the, it's on page eight of the main report, final report. So if you look at, sorry, page nine of the final report, there's a figure or two as a pie chart, and that shows the overall prioritization of the guiding principles as a result of the feedback that was received from the public workshops, as well as from the online survey that was completed in round one. And so you can see from there that clearly effective representation, representation by population and communities of interest were the top three, followed by the geographical and topographic features.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, yeah, I mean, those are the only questions and concerns I have. But again, I'm just very concerned that the results and the comments from my residents are not included in this report, and I just find that not acceptable.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Partridge, Councillor Brenda Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to be very real with y'all right now, because I live, breathe, and work for Ward 11. And when you first came into my office, I remember you asking me the question, "How are you doing this?" And I saw comments in Ward 11 of, the comments were very hodgepodge. I just want to put it on the record right now that I have 11 communities in Ward 11, and each one are as near and dear to the heart as anyone who would represent Ward 11, it would be. And I remember hearing one gentleman on the local radio station saying, and this was, I believe, from the master, "No one can represent Ward 11." Brenda Johnson, I'm representing Ward 11 very well. So I just, but when I first saw the two maps, can you flip over please to Ward 14, I think, 14, when I first saw that one, then I saw the 16 one, that's why I can see it there. If you go back to 14, thank you. I actually sat there and was okay, that makes sense, Ward 11 is being divided out, and I was, yep, that's good to go, until I started to see the rest of the map. And as Councillor Jackson said earlier, Ward 11 again has been criticized in your report as being hodgepodge. And when I look at Ward 9, and it starts at Ottawa Street, and it goes to the negative boundary, it will include a big portion of the urban population out there. It will include the landfill, it will include the quarry, agriculture. It's like you created, Ward 9 is another hodgepodge ward. And there's a couple of other concerns I have about the rest of the map as well. So when you were creating this, did you look at, as again, Ward 11 was considered hodgepodge, did you consider that you might in fact be creating another Ward 11, only it's going to be Ward 9?
The simple way to come at that is to remember that wards, because they're all 15, are going to include a number of different neighborhoods or communities together. Very few unless, and even then, unless it's, say, a lower city ward, it's smaller, there may be more similarities. Out here, what we were looking at is trying to balance off various things. The comments about Ward 11 in its current form involve the fact that there is Lake Shore and areas, orchard areas and whatever down on the lower level, there's an upper level, there's the areas, it's all the way there. It is large geography and it is complex, hodgepodge maybe just to throw away a line, but it's a complex place, a lot of different things at stake. What we're trying to do is to come up with a more reasonable population size, and to do that, of course, we shrink it. And again, acknowledging that there's going to be a lot of growth in the proposed Ward 9, we try to keep the lower level and the upper level separate. Again, meeting with the, trying to follow the idea of topographical features, and there's more coherence, if you will, in that proposed Ward 10, I guess, that we would separate from 9, and we end up with a collection of communities that happen to be located next to each other. Can't do, we can't have a, we can't just say, "Let's leave out the landfill and not cover it, let's leave out whatever." That's what's in that part of the city, so we try to work from the population side and find a reasonable boundary to capture that. So it's not that, it's any, I think it's less complex than current Ward 11, it's certainly moving in that direction. It'll never be, unless the landfill disappears and the whole thing is built up, it's still going to have to have some of that mix, but it's not nearly as complex as the current Ward 11. That's part of what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay, and I, just to hang onto that section there for a minute. So if you're looking at Upper Ottawa, it is characteristic, the look, the feel, everything is the mountain communities. It's been well built over the years and years and years. So you're saying that Ward 10, if you do Ward 10 and you propose it, it's because these communities are close by one another. That's completely, in my opinion, the opposite of Ward 9. You've got Upper Ottawa all the way up to 9.
And I think in terms of Councillor Jackson's questions earlier, maybe there is a better way to do that, that those of you who have that direct connection can contribute to this. I don't have a problem with suggestions. And then we run it through the principles, how well can we do that and still come up with something a bit better? I don't say that it can't be done, but we certainly tried different ways and felt in the end, when we weigh up all the interests at stake, that this was a direction to go. But I don't, I don't think you're far wrong to say, yes, it's a mix. And if there's a way to fix it, we can certainly try and do that.
I know the successes and I know the challenges of doing the job that I'm doing right now, representing Ward 11, as it would be for anybody who's sitting in this chair. And correcting those successes and challenges and lining them up. When I first saw it, as I said, I was all over it, I was ready to move, let's go, this one looks great. And then I started to look, because we're trying not to be real with y'all, now we're trying to look at the whole city. Then I'm looking at Ward 9, and I'm thinking, okay, we've just now taken those same challenges and successes, more challenges, and put them in other wards. So we're just dispersing what's been problematic in what you're saying in the past, and we're putting them in other wards for the future. So that, I guess, is more of a comment than a question. When, can you go to the 16, please? Thank you. When this was proposed to the public, and you might have said it earlier, and I apologize if I missed it, one of the things that's been angst amongst all of us is that would just create another budget, it would create another office, it would create, forget what the decision-making around here is, it would now put more pressures on the budget. Was that ever voiced at the Public Information Centers, that having another politician, having another office budget, having another, was going to create some sort of uncomfortable feeling for anybody? Or was that even a splurge?
I don't recall that that was explicitly articulated, like comments that we made earlier, for most people who came to those meetings, how spaces organized in here and those kinds of questions are probably not things that would be topical.
No, I was only thinking in terms of money.
Yeah, well, I certainly don't recall that we heard anything, one way or the other, that said, "Never, never, never, never add another councillor." And as I said, the calculation suggests that the whole is not a huge blank in the budget.
Okay, thank you for that. And a lot of my questions have been answered, they're crossing out, but one that came up this morning, and it was brought up by the last two speakers before you came up to your presentation, was election reform ever mentioned with any of your constituents or any of the constituents that showed up and said, "Yeah, this is all fine and dandy five."
This is all fine and dandy five, yeah, it's an issue that's out there, far beyond our remit.
I guess.
That's something that would have to come elsewhere. If you wanted to jump into ranked ballots for new wards, go for it. I'm not sure what the clerk would say, but yeah, there are some things that could happen. But in and of itself, we were trying to concentrate on the ways in which, or the areas which would be electing the councillors, how that would be done, how you boost turnout, those are all valid questions and ones that certainly are, must be addressed, and frankly, are not being addressed, but they were not being part of it. And again, people occasionally did have those comments, but they were not part of what we built into our strategy.
Okay, thank you. And one question that I had through the report, are you pleased or satisfied with the amount of input you've had from our citizens? And I mean the amount, how many people actually participated, and are you happy with the result?
Okay, Madam Chair, we recognize that and appreciate it right from the get-go, that having a comprehensive engagement, public engagement strategy was very important, and to get public input and comment was very important to this exercise. And I think we've taken all the necessary steps working with city staff to ensure that we achieve the maximum public input that we achieve. I think that overall, I think it's more about quality than quantity. What the people, the attendees that did come to the open houses, the responses that we did receive online and through other communications were very destructive, very detail-oriented, and that partly speaks to the fact that they were very engaged and interested in the subject. But I think it also speaks to the manner in which the public consultation was completed and the types of questions and issues and themes that we addressed during the rounds of consultation to optimize the responses that we received for the purposes of our work. So yes, from that perspective, I am satisfied, fully satisfied.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding is it was less than 500 at the end of the day, people who attended, people who submitted, online, then executing us. So less than 500. It's my understanding, please correct me, you're the expert on that, but it's my understanding that if you can get at least 10% of those who are going to be affected to participate, input, whatever, that's considered the norm. 10% is usually a good return. If you were to put a mail out to a community and 10% wrote back and had some input, that was a good return. So do you feel that given the population of this city, the amount of people who participated in one shape or another, do you feel that 500 or less than 500 is a good number?
Madam Chair, it's not something that I can answer because this is not a statistical survey. And so using a 10% rule or a 5% rule isn't really applicable in this kind of a study. And so I really can't, I don't have an appropriate answer to that.
Okay, so if you had 5,000 had input or 200 had input, it didn't matter because you were just looking for input and these are the people that chose to participate.
Madam Chair, obviously, the greater number of attendees and input is always more desirable than less, no question about that. But we have only so much control in that aspect of it to try and optimize the input that we receive. Thank you.
No, absolutely. I was just wondering from your perspective, would it have been, was it ideal, the amount of people that you had come up? Hard to say, that's all.
Madam Chair, I think it was, I think we received a reasonable attendance and input to the exercise, given the nature of the assignment and the number of open houses and methods that we utilized to engage the public in this project.
Okay, thank you. And we save comments for later, Mr. President. No, okay. So like I said before, I first saw the map, it's divided into three, I go to the 15 Ward option, Ward 11's divided into three, and I was ready to go, let's move, this is wonderful. But as I said, now that I've taken a real hard look at the rest of the city, that's when I started to have a bit of concern, and that's where I feel that there is some room for compromising here. So I'll leave my comments for the end when we start looking at.
And just a quick response, Madam Chair, the part of the dilemma in the 15 Ward option, if you go to the figure 12, and you look at the populations of Ward 7 and 8, and then try to figure out where you would put, sorry, certainly where you would try to put that extra ward, it becomes clear that we've got more people up in that area than even the three wards. And that's part of the trade-off, is you say, all right, they're large now, we're going to keep them large, that's your call. But we tried to help get a better population balance. Figure 12 shows that, and again, that we were trying to play around with two wards that were already across large and find a way to balance that off in that upper mountain area. But that was our best shot at it, for that purpose.
So just for the record, figure 12 is, because I got figure 14 as your 16 Ward option, I got figure 11 as your 15 Ward.
So 15.
So figure 11? I mind just saying, keep your eye on.
Yes, I think so. I'm trying to draw the chart.
Oh, the chart, excuse me.
Sorry, I forgot the numbers. 12 is the population chart.
Right.
And that is another sign in here, what are, how many are we working with in that space between the mountain, along the mountain route, let's put it, how many people are we looking at, and can that be two wards? Probably, it's more than two wards, not enough for three, and this is kind of a trade-off we're making, and we ended up putting it along with that area to the east. area to the east of Alton Falls.
So, oh, sure.
So it was kind of, how do we balance all of these various principles of input?
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. And I'm going to have a little bit of leeway for your councillor person to ask a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 29, 32, sorry, you say that you estimate the cost of a 16th councillor giving $230,000 off of 16. Did you get that from city staff? Did you track down the budget? How did you get that?
From city staff.
Okay. Let's see if I can explain. Mike, have you ever done the calculation of a 16th ward for cost?
For you, Madam Deputy Mayor, in addition to the, to the figure deaths in the report, so the $230,000 figure, I can come close to where I can stop it. I would say it's closer to 230,000. And the difference could be the timing of this report versus what we were stated are 2016 budget. So 250,000 would be just extrapolating based on the existing board budgets over and above that figure. I just want to remind the committee, we're in the midst of a board budget review through the government's committee. So there are the, some requests, demands as it relates to increasing resources for the board budgets. So that would represent an additional pressure. The other cost over and above the 230,000 to 250,000 dollars, fiscal space, the board office area, shorter fiscal space, and we would have to try to find some additional fiscal space to accommodate an additional councillor and their financial support. So again, I would just identify that over and above the operating impacts, annual operating impacts, there will be some one-time costs as related to fiscal space as well, over and above the potential for an additional board councillor. We are reviewing the level of resources for existing board councillors and whether or not there, whether or not there are some additional investments.
God, the only purpose to page 39, Chair, to make is, is charge staff, councilway feedback, area of municipalities, staffing levels, space levels. And so that could be an additional pressure on top of 250, whatever you say, depending what the government's committee recommends, what council ultimately approves. And of course, there's the capital cost. This would be a little rough, it's back there, I don't think. I'm not sure where you, how do you add another spot on this table? And so, what is the right number, or is your other direct perspective, what is the right number to use to help us make a decision on the cost of 16, 1 extra during our councils?
So for you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if you're asking me how would it reflect if approved it, the budget, I would ask I would come back, because in the short term, I believe the office space requirements and the real line to, around the horseshoe, would represent more of a pressure in 2017 than the operating impacts. So again, subject to the decision of committee as it relates to this work, is we would come back with that information.
God, if I, December 2018, we don't need the space to land, so we have 17 compression done. We need to know, Madam Chair, what it's going to cost, this is the right number, and I saw the 230, I thought it was low. And, you know, we're making, so we do 24, 15 budgets of 2016, I don't know. I know what the additional pressures I have in this committee, and of course, I don't worry to affect my position in policy here. And so, I'm not sure of an improvement today on term. I think there's probably other people requesting the information. Well, and I'd like to, I would correct our CFO to back this with the conversation exactly, want to see some pressure to come to you.
Thank you. We'll move that at the end of our discussions. Up next, we have Councillor Sue.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor Skelly. I have a few questions, I'll leave you there with me here. On the report here, the large reports have four, here, on page 13 and 14, talks about population growth trends on the analysis of Ward. Near the bottom of page 13, talks about the forecast, the highest population growth expected in Ward Eleven, all 9, 15, 12, 2, 1. Wards 5, 7, you expect to see minimal population growth, so Wards 3, 10, 14, 4, 13, and 6, your expected marginal population decline over the period. Do you, Madam Chair, where are these people in the decline from? Where are they going with this now? Where are you getting these figures?
Well, Madam Chair, the figure 14 that the councillor's report comes from, our growth analysis that we put together, looking at population growth and changes by existing Ward between 2015 and 2026. We're an aging society, and a number of wards, including the ones that we expect to see marginal population decline over the period, are expected to see relatively limited housing growth. However, we do have existing housing and population base, and over the next decade, average occupancy in those housing units is expected to decline with the aging of the population, i.e. children leave home, the adults in that household become empty nesters, perhaps they're older seniors, perhaps a spouse passes away. This is what's happening in society in Ontario and in Hamilton. So average occupancy levels within existing housing units is declining, and as a result, in areas where there's limited housing growth, the net impact is actually a marginal decline, potentially, in some of these wards identified.
Okay, if I may comment, I'll comment about Ward 14, my word. Yes, it's totally a rural, small town, agriculture. But I'm seeing matrix, seeing young families, seeing young families come back to farm. Things change. We all grow old, and there's a next generation coming. I'm seeing that, and it's happening. In fact, as an example, I'm going to have two new schools at Ward 14, Beverly Community Centre in Greensville. Right now, they're predicting a school opens in Greensville, and it will be portable there. And this is a brand-new school population growth, where you're seeing, and I see that as GND grows similarly too. So I don't agree with what's here, and I mean, every word has its own, but it's what I'm seeing on the other side, so. Can I comment on that, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, we used the data that we had available towards the end of 2015 to do our growth analysis. Certainly, the historical trend in the rural areas has been a population decline, and it's understandable, because as in Ward 14, there is no urban settlement areas, and we are not expecting significant housing growth in those areas that are within Ward 14. And so we do feel confident in our analysis. We do recognize that there will be pockets of some residential new housing development on a small scale in Ward 14. However, the overall impact in terms of population growth will be minimal, and as I mentioned, with the declining occupancy levels in existing housing units, your world trend is negative growth.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm beginning. So on page 19 of the report, south of the region, Ward here, halfway down, it says insurance representation, the work profile posted on the city website, designate. So if you look at that, I'm looking here, it says designate, one ward is rural, three is primary, the rural, three is urban, and eight is urban. When I add those up, that should be 16 wards. So where did you do the last part? When I add, when I, so the middle of the page, 18, when I add, we have here on, by the way, talks about profiles posted on the city website. Now I'm coming up with 16 wards here.
I suspect that's a typo. Those were drawn from the ward profiles attached to the profiles of councillors on the current city website, so it's probably a typo, and I are adding those up. And I can't pop the cover, I'm not sure which is which. Probably the, no, I better not say. But those, all of the ward profiles are there, I simply went through and tried to understand how the current wards are understood as it relates to urban and rural interests. So I don't see this count.
I'm just trying to make a point that I didn't read, I made a point that I didn't read in the report, so I'm sure.
We'll leave you with your questions.
And, and then farther down, can you explain to me, for the comprehensive, what was first applied, and talks about interim municipal ward, can you explain that, because we see it on 2003? Can you look through that?
Yes, I can. That was a review undertaken after amalgamation. Aurora Carlton Regional Municipality was consolidated into a single-tier municipality called the City of Ottawa, sounds funny. Very soon after amalgamation, a citizens' task force was established to review the electoral arrangements and to make recommendations. In the course of that review, the task force basically defined the areas outside the core, while it had kind of a simple division, it was either city or the suburb. And what they ended up doing is not unlike, perhaps, the model that councillor Jackson referred to, where they sort of took suburban areas and stretched them right up to the edge of the city, and called those wards. And the objection to that filed by a group of citizens in one of the former municipalities argued that by following that population-driven model, it effectively excluded any role for rural ownership. And the board said, you're right, that's not acceptable. That is a distinctive set of interests, it's a distinctive community of interest within Ottawa, and the wards must reflect that. And that became a driving factor in our design here, to ensure that the same result would not happen in Hamilton, because we were persuaded through the public meetings, through the feedback of all kinds, that rural Hamilton mattered. And while it might not make the cut on a strict population basis, we had to find a way to build that into the design of the wards. And that is what, what we have tried to do in both 15 and 16-word models, to say, don't repeat the flaw that happened in Ottawa. The board stepped in and said, no, good, throw it out, do it again. And they came back with one, I haven't looked at the details of the two, but they came back with a model that the board found acceptable, where that rural interest was given some kind of recognition in the allocation of seats on city council.
So, Madam Chair, so that was the termination by going beyond Ottawa?
It was, well, the Ontario Municipal Board heard an appeal against the bylaw, and basically said, that is a community of interest that needs to be reflected, and if I'm not mistaken, it quoted in here, but, yeah, it basically did, it basically said, we're not going to be such a thing as a rural community of interest, the wards should reflect that.
Thank you for that. I mean, thank you. Another thing to mention, I think Mrs. Beatty mentioned it about public input, and if you remember, we had the one in Rockton, but Saturday, it was part of the Saturday previous to the Rockton session, there was the Farm Family, the Farm Boo Citizen of the Year event, and I presented a speech in the front, and I mentioned the, what was it, Rockton Fairgrounds, as far as the input got from Ward Number, and half the people who were there didn't realize until that night that there was going to be Ward Number being happening. So they were showing up, and I did come to the meeting in Rockton, but I didn't speak, I stayed about, just to third, that I didn't hear my speaker voice. But they had come to the company, and we didn't know about this, we didn't mention it at the meeting. So if you could comment on that, too, Madam Chair, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, certainly through the public engagement strategy of this assignment, working with city staff, there was a comprehensive communications plan that was initiated through the work by city staff and communications. So it included a range of communications tools, including posting information on the public website and the city's website. There was advertisements on television, through the weather network, through the media, picked it up and also circulated that information in a number of meetings. So we do feel that it did get fairly wide circulation in terms of communicating when and where those public open houses were held. And I think we did, and again, this was the communication staff at the city, led that initiative with our support.
Thank you for that. Continue, Beatty, thank you, Madam Chair.
You can have as much time as you want.
Oh, great, thanks. So, comment came up this morning, Madam Chair, the Ward 14 would be a challenge. Number seven, Professor, did you say that?
I'm paying it up. We've been at this for a while, so I'm not sure. I did say that, did you remember the context?
Okay, so in what way, Madam Chair, would Ward 14 be a challenge?
Okay, I think I recall now where that came up. It's related to the question we just asked about population and how to fit that in. Let me try and respond to it this way. If we were driven strictly by population, the reality is that the western rural part of the city, it takes a lot of territory to get up to some kind of a quarter, or even within the range. It would become larger and larger and larger, simply because of the low density and the scattered population. And so our question is, how do you balance that off? And at the present time, the ward is clearly large, and it's probably the largest geographic area. We were reluctant to see it get any larger, simply for the point of getting around and providing access between the councillor and the residents and vice versa. So we had to try to decide, can we make, can we push that at all? And if so, how would that at its best be done? So it was, the challenge is, you can't just drive it by population and expect it to be provide effective representation, but you can't ignore it. You can't ignore the population factor entirely. But it is two scenarios, you'll see, that the ward, whatever the number happens to be on there, is on the low side. And part of our, if you will, part of the package is to say, accept, not unlike the Ottawa store, accept that there are going to be some wards that are very low in population because they are capturing the rural community. And don't insist that numbers are everything. Recognize that we can live with a, I wouldn't say an exception to the principle, we can back off applying the principles rigidly because we've got this other factor to take into account. So I'm not sure if that's the direct answer to your question, but it's, we were very conscious of having to address that part of the city with the low density that is not, I think your comment is a moment ago, or somehow, I don't remember, it's not going to change very much, between escarpments and green belts, and this and that and the other, it probably going to stay at the lower population level. And we're basically saying, the council, live with it, live with that because there is an important community there. Try not to make it any larger than it already is. Go on, circle this, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you for that. Maybe the warding size is very large, it could be a challenge for some people, or maybe it's not, because you know the territory, you know the people, who embrace the areas, and it's a work of color, it's a work of color, it's a work of scratch, it's online, it's a work of everything, right? In fact, I left shortly for a few minutes, working on a $4 million greenhouse project, trying to help out some, I didn't hear anything at the end, you're sorry. I just want to say, no disrespect to Sturridge, the presentation, amalgamation's still up there, amalgamation's still close to being, continues, and it's up there, believe me, and I, myself alone, I have 12 small communities out there, which are interlinked, Greensville, Co-Camp, Inland, Ward Beach, Troy, Rockton, Thrill, District, Greensville, West Silverwood, and West Climbrow, and other ones in the county that are up there. And we all work together very tight, very close, and fending every one. And we all work together very tight, very close, and fending every one of those. And I understand city, my parents were here in the mid-forties, they lived on Goier Street, they worked here, bought a farm in nineteen forty-eight. I have family here on the other side, my kids, I'm working at Hamilton, I have a personal family mother, and I do work with my colleagues on the table. We hold on many issues in support and working towards it together. And I appreciate the support from the fellow council members, much appreciated, so. And saying that, I'll leave it be, and thank you for the report, and what are you doing? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Collins.
I don't have any questions for the presenters, but I do have a question of staff, so if you come back, we'd be appropriate time for it.
You can ask those questions.
Agreed. Thank you then. And I did raise the whole issue of area rating in my presentation. I don't see a reference here for the answer, and it didn't sound like when I had my discussion that it was an issue of importance. And really, I don't expect this to be, I don't expect this to be my formal and informal discussions with council, my colleagues, I don't expect to see the status quo presented. And so whether it's tweaked, whether there's substantial overhaul, or something in between, there will be implications from an area rating perspective. And I would ask through you to Mr. Zager, as to incorporate and do this whole process, again, for whatever bylaw council seeks to implement, how can finance staff assist in just understanding what council needs to be prepared for as it relates to area rating? So to be clear, past presentations have, I think Mr. Zager has noted, we have several dozen tax codes right now. If we want to retain transit area rating as part of this, how is that, again, not an issue for the consultant, but something that needs to be dealt with under a more value scenario? How is that dealt with? How are we dealing with the capital area rating that we have in place? And the other area rating issues that, again, are part of the discussion for determining tax rates now, which are largely based on aid from municipalities and in some cases are on a fourth grade basis?
Mr. Zager.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, just in terms of where we are, staff have not conducted any review of our area rating policies or potential impacts in the existing ward boundaries as it relates to the mix of tax, tax rates across the properties at this point. We're waiting for direction from committee as it relates to which scenarios to report that now. But in terms of what the impacts will be, and just for clarification of area rating, the boundaries, the realignment of ward boundaries will not dictate changes in the properties that experience varying rates of taxation because of area rating. Area rating, under the municipal act, is determined according to our special services, and special services are defined by those services that have, A, different levels of service, it's a different level of service delivery, and a difference in the manner that the service is provided. So different level of service is transit, whether it's urban or rural. Rural properties don't have immediate access to transit. In the case of fire, it's the manner that it's provided. So, again, subject to some direction from committee as it relates to different scenarios, we would report back on the mix of, or the mix or blend of properties within those revised ward boundaries as it relates to properties that have varied tax rates. And I say varied tax rates because I believe currently we have thirty-two tax tables. And those tax tables are a reflection of properties that are urban or transit, but could be rural fire, or it could be urban transit and urban fire, no sidewalks, no street lighting. Or it could be rural transit, urban fire. So just examples of how properties vary. So we would come back based on some clear direction as it relates to boundaries and try to provide some indication to each of the, as it relates to each of the wards as to the blend or mix of properties that will have varying tax rates. So that relates to the levying of taxes. Councilor Collins makes reference to the point of, I believe, the area rating reserves. Just remind committee, the area, the capital reinvestment reserves are related to former city of Hamilton wards one through eight. When I look at the maps, and I just had the chance to look at the maps today, when I look at the two options, is I see some blending along the east, the eastern end of the city in terms of wards nine and ten and five, six and nine, and then varying in terms of Ward twelve. And you'll recall, as it relates to the capital reinvestment, we levy wards one through eight as it relates to capital reinvestment, and those proceeds are shared equally by wards one through eight. Based on the maps, what I see is there would be some properties that would be formerly on wards five or six, that would be, continue to be levied. However, the ward councillors in nine and ten would be distributing those proceeds. And we would need to come back with policies as it relates to pay and play, meaning those properties who pay into it, contribute into it, they should be the recipients of those funds. So for instance, if properties are levied in the new ward nine, the balance of ward nine should not be the recipients of those proceeds. And so we would need to come back with some direction as it relates to amending our area rating policies, including our capital reinvestment reserves. So again, we would seek some direction from committee as it relates to some scenarios. I just want to caution council just around timing. We have one dedicated resource as it relates to developing these policies, that's the same resource who is currently immersed in reassessment, our property reassessment cycle and our budget process. I don't see that we would have a resource to focus on this until after the, sorry, April two thousand seventeen. So just around managing expectations as it relates to starting the work, I would not have a resource who could be dedicated, and it's an expertise exclusive about consulting the work out. If it's delivered in-house, we would not be able to initiate this work until April twenty seventeen. We would report back. The other factor I just want to inform committee of, I mentioned earlier, we have thirty-two tax tables. Before we could implement a change in our taxation, we would need some lead time to develop the details in those tax tables. It's a very manual process. So we would have to report back with some of those time constraints so that committee has some sense, if it is going to move forward, how much lead time we would need.
Thank you. And before we, Councilor Collins, you continue. Gentlemen, would you like to sit down? And that was Brenda Johnson. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. There are three chairs at the staff table, and my apologies, thank you, Councilor, for pointing that out. Councilor Collins, you can continue.
Thanks. And just on the transit issue again, and that information can be gathered concurrent with whatever process takes place that's referenced in the report. Just on the transit again, in terms of the area rating, the former municipal boundaries play a role in what regard, in what way?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I believe the reference to other municipalities in area rating closely resembles how we area rate fire. We area rate fire as it relates to the service level and the manner that we deliver fire. So as fire service levels increase or improve, if they move from a volunteer to a composite and ultimately to a career, so too do the fire boundaries and the amount that's levied. How transit differs is, transit is levied by former municipality. And those former municipality boundaries right now closely resemble the ward boundaries. So one through eight, former city of Hamilton, nine, ten, and to a certain degree eleven, being Stony Creek, and then twelve, thirteen, Ancaster and Dundas, and fourteen, fifteen, Flamborough. So as it relates to amending or altering the boundaries, we would have to come back with the information as it relates to how the tax rates will vary. Tax rates currently vary in wards, it would just be an additional change. So ward, the ward councillors would have to be more familiar with which properties are levied for transit, and the transit levies vary more significantly between the former city of Hamilton and the former suburban municipality. So for instance, based on the map that's on the screen currently, Ward nine, that ward councillor would have very different tax rates from Upper Ottawa right up to the boundary of the former city of Hamilton versus Stony Creek Mountain and Flamborough. So again, and that have in each of.
Thanks, Mike. And through you, and this can certainly come out in a report later, but I am curious, though, the former municipal boundaries were used for the purposes of creating the transit area rating. If the transit, if the former municipal boundaries are not part of the new electoral map and there's a.
Actually apply it on the tax bill as a special charge. So it is levied against the former municipality of Ancaster, but not as an area rated, it's a special charge on the tax bill. As it relates to the councillor's question in terms of what the legislation allows for special services, and that's the terminology used in the municipal act, special services and the ability for municipalities to levy varied tax rates is subject to a service that is not broadly provided. So transit, for instance, is not broadly provided in that, it's not provided in rural areas, or that it is provided at a different level of service and in a different manner. In the case of fire, it is delivered either through volunteer or composite fire services, which is a blend of career and volunteer, and finally, the third scenario is career. So again, the legislation doesn't speak to physical boundaries, what it speaks to is the level of service and the manner that the service is provided. So as it relates to the sidewalk snow clearing, that's not an area rated service, it is levied by a former municipality, Ancaster. So again, we would have to come back to committee as it relates to options regarding Ward twelve and speak to how we would continue to levy for that special service, the sidewalk snow clearing, given that four twelve, or, sorry, Ward twelve may represent a blending of Ward twelve and current Ward fourteen.
So the legislation did change then, between the time that Joe was here and you, because it's based on service levels, it was pretty clearly articulated to me prior to that, it was based on former communities, because they were being censored to the former communities and the services that they had come to rely on, or the lack of services that they had in play at the time of the amalgamation. When was that change in that legislation? When was the most recent change in that municipal act?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'd have to revisit, I'm familiar with the current language of the current act, I would have to report back as part of that, it's suggested through the consultants two thousand and one.
Thank you. So can I ask, I put a scenario out there, and I'm going to put it out there now, so Scenic Woods gets an area, that's an Ancaster component, they get area rated for transit. They come into part of Ward eight, their neighbors cross the street, do not get area rated, they pay full pop. People cross the street, pay, have a levy benefit that goes into the area reserve for expenditures and projects. So the dilemma, and this is where it comes to the community of interest challenge, is you've got two issues with this suggestion. One is that obviously the Scenic Woods people will continue arguing that they should have the benefit of the transit area rating. The people across the street would say, no, you should be paying the same thing as we have, and I'll be the councillor in the middle. And then on top of all that, we will have the Scenic Woods people say, hey, we want to tap into some of that area rating dollars to build a trail in this particular location, and I'll have to say to them, no, you don't contribute to this fund, it's only for the people across the street and beyond. So maybe this is a better question to the consultant. Again, how is that a community of interest? When you have to deal with pretty clear policies that impact two different neighborhoods virtually across the street as a result of what you're putting forward? I'm trying to understand, there's no community of interest, in fact, there's a polarization, and now you're putting a council in the middle of that.
Through you, Madam Chair. As I say, tax policy was not a key determinant in drawing the boundaries. We looked at other factors, which is more the urban versus the rural over time, service levels can, the individuals do change. And at that particular point, as Mr. Zager indicated, you know, your appropriate tax policies would follow.
So, Mrs. Zager, through the chair, what makes sense to me, and I appreciate your comments, I mean, I want to make sure that I respect, you've got the pedigree, you've done a lot of due diligence, and you are experts in your area, and I want to make sure that's a matter of public record, that I really respect the work that you've done to date. The question I have to make, Zager, if we adopt one of these models, say the fifteen ward model, that clearly has these distinctive tax policies, that would be probably very problematic for any future councillor to represent, it's probably best and prudent to deal with it prior to the election, so that when they go in the election, those policies are no longer an issue that divides those neighborhoods. What type of timeframe do we need to do the assessment and make those changes in those tax policies so that we can make them all the more of a community of interest with these proposals?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, just in terms of timing, the principal bylaw that would have to, if there is any amendment to our tax policies, the principal bylaw that would have to be amended is our tax policies bylaw. The tax policies bylaw comes before council each spring upon the approval of the budget. So again, we would look either to report back and get some confirmation as to amendments to our tax policies by the spring of two thousand and eighteen.
So, I appreciate that. So in that question, we talked about the fact that there's eight wards that have a capital area reserve, and in this projection, there'll be new areas coming in that haven't contributed to that reserve, I wouldn't be entitled to that reserve. Would there be an ability to make them whole so they could? And would you have to assess what that would be in regards to cost prior to formalizing, for example, these options?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if I understand the question, and that is, if there were some blending of wards so that some properties would be recipients of the proceeds from the capital reinvestment and some weren't, and if we wanted some uniformity across the board so that all could be recipients, well, in that case, those properties who currently are not contributing and beneficiaries would have to start contributing. So we would have to increase the tax levy for those properties so that they are contributing equally to those who are currently contributing. So it is possible, but it would require an additional tax levy.
And I appreciate, I mean, I'm just looking at this, and I think that if our real desire is to have councillors represent community of interest, we don't have to make it any more difficult, or try to make it as smooth transition as practical. And I would suggest very strongly that at some point, if we go down this road, that. And I would suggest very strongly that at some point, if we go down this road, that we're going to need those reports, understand what those financial implications are, and in fact, where we could harmonize those tax policies with this new ward boundary, not only should we do it, but we should do it obviously before the next election. So we need to be aware of that. And I guess my last question, because it's certainly been out there on Twitter sphere, that the consultants, the council hasn't, has been misbehaving and attacking the consultants. So can I ask the consultant's director, do you feel like you've been attacked today?
Counselor, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for that. Before we move forward, I believe Counselor Marola, second time speaker.
First time.
First time, I apologize.
No problem. Thanks, Madam Chair. Let me start off by saying that I support the recommendations, but from my perspective, I'm not afraid of the changes that are requested from my community. But I do have to say that some of the changes for the suburban area are pretty radical and ones that I think need some time for not only the neighborhoods to adjust to and to be consulted with, but also having one wrapped in mind around what it actually means. So, and not to dwell on the past, but I was heavily criticized for suggesting that this process will lead to potentially abolishing some of the suburban areas. And that's exactly what we have before us here today. So I know that there was a column written about my reckless speech and irresponsible nature and so on. Obviously, I guess an apology would be nice, but I'll never get that. But having said that, what's before us is pretty radical and does abolish a significant part. Asher-Flambrug, Council of Pesuda, in Ancaster, half of it's abolished. Stony Creek is literally, half of it goes into Hamilton, the other half goes into Glambrook. I think this is a pretty serious recommendation by the sheer magnitude of the historical impact it will have. So in saying that, I'm going to be supporting and seconding Counselor Collins' motion to defer this, so that, Connolly, sorry, motion to defer it and to really wrap our minds around it, speak with staff, speak amongst ourselves, have an opportunity for the counselors to speak to their neighborhoods and communities, and try to really look at the historical significance that this will have and the impact that it will have to many people from an emotional standpoint. And we can never overstate that. I really truly believe that. I was here at amalgamation. I understand the sensitivities, although in some areas, it's lessened today than it was then, it's still a factor, one that we need to be sensitive about. So in saying that, I will second it accordingly because I think it's a good idea and it's a sage approach to dealing with a very sensitive and potentially volatile recommendation as before us. And I look forward to bringing this to fruition as soon as possible. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marola. Any further comments? No further comments. Thank you, gentlemen, for your report today. We appreciate your time and your professionalism, and I'm sure we'll have more questions for you down the road. Thank you again, and staff. And on that note, a motion to receive moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor, carried. Counselor, we have two motions. Counselor Ferguson is out of the room, so we'll deal, you have it. Do we deal with Counselor Connolly's, Brenda's, sorry, Counselor Johnson's first or Counselor Connolly's first?
I don't think anybody has actually deemed to deal with it first, so I don't think it really matters at this point. But if you went to Counselor Ferguson first, so I would deal with him first.
I apologize, Counselor Connolly.
Counselor Connolly's was put before them.
Then let's do Counselor Connolly. Counselor Connolly, would you like to present your motion?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sam Marula, that members of the Hamilton City Council be requested to forward to Watson and Associates and in association with Dr. Robert Williams, Trust Learning Solutions and ICI Associates to Eric Cavanagh at Watson/econ.ca. Any further suggestions that the council members may have for alternate ward boundary model options, no later than Friday, November 4, 2016, and that Watson and Associates be directed to compile any additional ward boundary model options that may be provided by members of council into a consolidated report, which is to also include the two options currently listed in Appendix A to report CL 16009 in brackets A, respecting the city of Hamilton Ward Boundary Review, file a consultant report and report back to the Future General Issues Committee.
Thank you, Counselor Connolly. Counselor Jackson.
Well.
Sorry, Counselor Connolly, did you want to speak to that? I apologize.
No, no apology necessary. No, I think it's very important that we get the city councilor's opinion on this. We've never been asked it, even at the committee meetings that we had in our own areas. And I think there is some good suggestions that could come through. We realize, I think all of us realize, there has to be changes. But we think we can do some changes that will satisfy an OMB hearing if it goes to that, and that would answer a lot of questions that have been asked here, especially with the area ratings and boundaries. Some of us have already talked to each other, that we have but on each board to see what their opinion would be and what they would like and what we would like, and I think we can come up with some ideas that would be acceptable. So I'm hoping that council will approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I'm supportive of what Counselor Connolly and Counselor Marola put forward. Again, if for no other reason than if the Ward 15 option, if the Ward 16 option both go forward as is, I'd have to explain, someone would have to explain to my community why the preservation of the entire East Mountain is worthy in the 16 Ward option, yet it isn't worthy in the 15 Ward option. So just as, again, putting me aside, that would have to, that paradox would have to, definitely have to be explained. Can I ask, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, to either our staff or the consultants, today with your, what's considered today your final report, but the conversation continuing, which I'm grateful for, is this document, Madam Deputy Mayor, in the ownership now of council today, or in light of Counselor Connolly's motion and other motions that are going to be forthcoming, asking staff to delve more into other areas of questions that you've heard earlier, is this still in the ownership of Watson as this conversation's continuing? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, whoever might want to answer that, please?
Madam Clerk?
Rose, please.
Madam Deputy Mayor, the report has been filed with committee, so it is in your ownership. You have provided direction that members of council have the opportunity to provide additional information to the consultants, and they will compile a further report, but will have the two options that have been tabled today included.
So, Rose, I'm interpreting a hybrid then? It's in our ownership today? However, we're continuing to contract Watson and Associates in the ongoing weeks and months potentially ahead as potentially hypothetically alternatives may be submitted as well? So have I interpreted that correctly, Madam Deputy Mayor? Through to Rose?
Correct, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm supportive of what's here today, and some of the questions have been asked by Counselor Ferguson, Brenda Johnson, Counselor Collins. I think we need to have as comprehensive of information as possible so that the entire city of Hamilton at some point knows exactly what may be forthcoming, whichever direction we ultimately choose and whichever direction ultimately the citizens say is satisfactory. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson, did you wish to speak to this?
Yeah, I do. And Friday, November 4 is problematic for me. One of the reasons that I would like to support this is so I can go back to the community councils, I can go back to the associations and just give them a blurb. I have two community meetings next week that will accomplish that, but, or sorry, the week after the 4th, which will accomplish that, but it doesn't give me the opportunity to go into the Glambrook area. So I would respectfully request that we extend this date from November the 4th, please. I don't know. Can we at least say the end of November? I'm not trying to put wrench into this, but if we're looking for community output, I would really like to get that more accomplished than try to rush this through, and I won't be able to do that by the 4th.
Counsel, would anyone like to comment on that? Counselor Marola?
I think that's fair, considering that it's almost the first of November now.
Thirty days.
Three days from November 4 is going to be.
Counselor Farr?
I'm very, very confident, in fact, 100% sure, that even by holding off till November the 4th, which I was ready to support, we're probably going to get a petition. We're going to have someone who's well-known to this issue, who's very anxious and has been for some time to see some movement, and who had an expectation today, although we don't always come through on expectations in a matter of big or small, that there'd be some resolve today. So I basically wanted to share that at this time, so you are aware and through you to the appropriate staff, is that something that has any validity if we were to hold off between now and November the 4th? Is there something to appeal essentially?
No. Sorry, folks?
Well, you can't.
Counselor Farr. Ask his question, and could we have someone from either the consultants or staff speak to this? Is there anything to appeal based on the outcome of today's motions?
Through the chair, a petition is not dependent on whether you were to act today or you were not to act today. So that's one route in which to get the matter before the OMB. The other, you would have to pass a bylaw, which is appealing the bylaw.
Lisa, we can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. A petition is not dependent on what you do or do not do today, and that is one process in the matter coming before the OMB. The other is if a bylaw is passed, deciding ward boundaries, that there wouldn't be an appeal of the bylaw.
Counselor Farr?
And that, but, so Lisa, if I'm hearing you correctly, a petition, actually, can you be more specific? If a petition were to start up today, is there validity in that petition as it relates to a delayed decision on our part, effective today, since this is the end of phase four, this is the end of the process as far as we've asked it to play out?
I'll just start at the beginning of it again. A petition is a separate process, so it would first need to meet the hurdle of the 500 electors signatories to it, and then there is a 90-day time period that starts to run in which council has an opportunity to pass bylaw. And then at the end of that, if no bylaw is passed, it could go to the OMB. The factors that the counselor is talking to through the chair would be considered at that point of how council's acting, how matters are proceeding.
So it all depends on the content of the petition, but can you just review one more time the timeline? And I'm trying to appreciate the former speaker's calendar issues, and now it seems to be some are more inclined to amend November 4th and make it something a little closer to December. So what was that timeline again? Through you, to Lisa?
When the petition is found to have the required 500 signatories electors, council then has 90 days from that time either to pass bylaw or not to pass bylaw. And if it does not, then the matter can go to the OMB for a hearing.
Okay. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate Counselor Connolly's November 4th date. I got some time, I'm assuming there'll be some more speakers to consider it being pushed out to the end of December, and certainly we all have time to make a decision made in Hamilton versus in the event, and it's a likely event, that 500 names get gathered up in the next few days, it is a likely occurrence, with the 90 days we have, we still have an opportunity to make that made in Hamilton solution. So thank you.
Thank you. So it could, in essence, be 90 days from today.
900 days from the petition.
900 days from the 500 signatures which could result, which could actually be accumulated today. Yeah, we, Lisa? I'm sorry, if those 500 signatures came today, we could actually see that petition 90 days from today.
There are, there are some technical steps involved of actually validating that the signatures are qualified signatures, so it wouldn't be same day, but it would be a short time period before that 90 day.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe there was someone else, was it Counselor Collins, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, well, I thought we had, as I had asked before, the process was that it's advertised to the public and people can come out and have their say on the bylaw. So I just wanted to confirm that that's still the process and that clerks at some point in time. Sorry, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, my apologies, and Tony and Rose can correct me if I'm incorrect. The public consultation for this process has already occurred within each, within the communities, so there is no longer another public meeting at GIC. What would happen is the next meeting, the bylaw would come forward, the public could provide a delegation, I'm assuming the report's going to come forward with the bylaw at that time to speak to that. Yes, and then once council passes it.
Forty-five day clock.
Then there's 45 days.
Correct.
Yes, and I typed it up and emailed it to you while we were in here and speaking, so that's when it starts.
So to be clear, the clock starts ticking once the bylaw's on the agenda and the bylaw was not on the agenda today, is that right?
To the, yes, correct, I believe so.
Rose?
Uh, Rose? Madam Deputy Mayor, the only distinction is that there's actually two processes. You can have the process as Lisa indicated, if a petition comes in, then that's a 90-day timeline. If council passes a bylaw, then there's that 45-day period of appeal possibility. So they're related, but two different processes under the municipal act.
I'm comfortable with that. So we'll keep going as we had asked and we'll get the information back.
Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I too, I'm quite comfortable with it. I mean, we've had our discussion and we put the motion on the table. We're going to, I think we're all motivated, we're going to be working with the consultant. So I don't see that there is going to be a timing issue.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Can we address Counselor Johnson's request? Do we vote on an amendment or do we deal with Counselor Ferguson's?
I would like to move that we move the comment period for us to the end of November, November 30, that's seconded by Counselor whoever.
Marula. Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Marula, the conversation period be extended to the end of November, Counselor? All those in favor, carried. Is that an amendment to Counselor Connolly's that we must now vote on? All those in favor of Counselor Connolly's motion?
Carried.
As amended?
Carried.
Any opposed? Carried. Counselor Ferguson, I understand you have a motion.
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, that the General Manager of Finance and Corporate Services be directed to review what the capital and operating costs of increasing the composition of council by one member and report back to the General Issues Committee.
Counselor, sorry, that was seconded by?
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? Carried. I can't believe we're at this section. Counselor Collins?
Yep, and it's moved by myself, and I didn't fill in the second here. That's General Manager of Finance and Corporate Services be directed to review the blend of properties within the proposed revised ward boundaries with respect to the current area rating policies and report back to the General Issues Committee. This is just for information purposes, it's not formally part of what's here, but I think it's relevant to the discussion of today. Seconded by Counselor Jackson.
Seconded by Counselor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? Carried. And we have received the presentation?
Motion to adjourn.
Have we received, we have not received the presentation? Did we? Motion to adjourn, please. No? Have we received the presentation? Counselor? Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, you have to receive the written correspondence. May I please have a motion to receive the written correspondence? Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Connolly. All those in favor?
Carried.
All those in favor?
Carried.
May, Councillor Pearson, before we adjourn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I just want to ask through you, if I could, to the clerk. Madam Clerk, was there a reason that we had Councillor Donna Skelly line up perfectly for this tremendously busy month that we've had and major issues on the table?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, actually, because I knew she could handle it.
And I wanted to have that for the record, because Councillor Skelly, you've done an excellent job as deputy mayor, there's been some tremendous issues, and that baptism by fire, you've got a great tan.
Thank you. Thank you. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councillor Pearson, seconded by Councillor Ferguson. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
We all make mistakes.